All right, good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honoured today to have a pre-recorded video of students from Queen Elizabeth Elementary School singing "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us, my friend. Our love is eternal, it's eternal, la quoi. Your history, your comfort, and your glory, oh, sweet mother. Glorious and free. O Canada, he sent a heart for me. O Canada, he sent a heart for me.
We are also very pleased today to have a video featuring students from Queen Elizabeth High School give the acknowledgement of the land. Education Director Fink, would you please introduce the video?
My name is Chair Bolger, trustees, superintendents, and guests. My name is Gary Tink, and I'm one of the educational directors for Area 7. I'm excited to be here today and share the important work two schools are doing around Results III, citizenship, and to introduce Lisa McConnell, the principal at Queen Elizabeth Elementary School, and Claire Haney, the principal at Queen Elizabeth High School, joined on video by students from the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, who will start us off in a good way with acknowledgement of the land.
Hello, trustees, chief superintendent, superintendents, directors, and audience members. My name is Claire Haney, and I'm a fourth-generation Sather. My great-grandparents came to Canada from Ireland and Scotland, and I was born and raised in Winnipeg, Manitoba, on Treaty I territory. I have the great privilege of being the principal of Queen Elizabeth High School, which is home to the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, or the DHH program for short. We have learned that plain sign language, sometimes called Plains Indigenous Sign Language, was used all along the prairies by the Cree, Dakota, and the Siksa. Plain sign language was not only for deaf people, but was a historical means of communication between indigenous groups if they did not speak the same oral languages. Other forms of indigenous sign language are Plateau Sign Language and Inuit Sign Language. While most forms of indigenous sign language have been replaced by American Sign Language and Quebec Sign Language, there are small groups of indigenous people who know and use these visual languages. Acknowledging the land where we gather demonstrates our ongoing commitment to the original spirit and intent of Treaty VII, also known as the Blackfoot Treaty. This agreement is to share the land and live well together in peace for as long as the sun shines, the grass grows, and the river flows. This acknowledgement is an act of truth and reconciliation to honour the indigenous people who have cared for their traditional territories since time immemorial, and leads us to consider our individual and collective roles and responsibilities to the treaty relationship. The students in our Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program at Queen Elizabeth High School will now share the CBE land acknowledgement in American Sign Language. Our hard-of-hearing oral students are reading the acknowledgement, while our deaf ASL-using students are signing it.
The Calgary Board of Education acknowledged the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty VII nations, including the Siksa'ipi comprised of the Siksa, the Kainai, the Bekani, and the Emsika'ipi Bekani nations. We acknowledge the Sutina nations, the Iri-Nakota comprised of the Chiniki, Pares Paul, and Good Stony nations, the Matis nation within Alberta, and all people who made their homes in the Treaty VII region of southern Alberta. This land on which we gather is traditionally known as Mokistis, Blackfoot, Gazzissi, Susina, Wudispa, Nakota, and Oto'wi, Northern mischief, and Cree.
As a learning organization, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action focused on education for reconciliation.
Morning, trustees, chief superintendent, superintendents, directors, and audience. My name's Lisa McConnell. Thank you to the DHH students at Queen Elizabeth High School for the land acknowledgement. In keeping with the new CBE land acknowledgement, I'll continue with our commitment to reconciliation. I'm the principal representing the learning community at Queen Elizabeth School, and I'm a seventh-generation immigrant. My ancestors came to Canada from Germany, England, and Scotland. They initially settled in Treaty I territory and the Peace and Friendship Treaties regions. Both Queen Elizabeth School and Queen Elizabeth High School are located only a few blocks from the Bow River, where our students walk to learn about their roles as citizens in our community. Like the banks of the, like the constant flow of the river, the dual banks of the Bow River run separate but together to the same destination. At Queen Elizabeth School and Queen Elizabeth High Schools, we commit to making our schools places where we listen to each student's individual present story in parallel with others' experiences, both historical and contemporary, to continue to advance learning. The land acknowledgement, as shared by the DHH students at Queen Elizabeth High School, and this commitment to reconciliation form the foundation of our response to individual student ease and diversity. Our commitment is reflected in the development of programming, which advances learning excellence and makes space for individual and collective identities through active engaged citizenship.
Thank you so very much for that incredible land acknowledgement. It is a learning experience in itself to learn how to verbally articulate it and sing it in American Sign Language is fantastic. So thank you to the students at Queenie as well as for the anthem. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all trustees, superintendents, staff, and public participating in today's virtual public board meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, there are no agenda changes to be noted for today's meeting.
Thank you. Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved as submitted? Thank you, Trustee Close. I will now call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed of the motion. Trustee Close?
In favor, thank you.
Trustee Dennis?
In favor, thank you.
Trustee Hack?
In favor.
Trustee May?
In favor.
Trustee Vukadinovich?
Favor.
Thank you. I'm also in favor of the motion that is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is the Alberta School Boards Association Friends of Education Award. The Alberta School Boards Association Friends of Education Award recognizes organizations that have made a significant contribution to education in communities across Alberta. Nominees must demonstrate a significant contribution to education and a commitment to the improvement of education for Alberta students. The CBE may nominate one nominee to the ASBA Zone 5 selection committee. Today, the board will consider nominating the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth as CB's nomination for the Friends of Education Award. The Urban Society of Aboriginal Youth is a leading organization in Calgary dedicated to empowering indigenous youth through education, cultural programming, and innovative learning experiences. U.S.A. delivers impactful school-based programs that foster inclusion, cultural pride, and academic success for indigenous students. Through partnerships with schools, they provide mentorship, cultural learning, STEM education, basic needs support, and digital tools like virtual and augmented reality to support student engagement. U.S.A.'s commitment to holistic education ensures that indigenous youth in Calgary have access to learning opportunities that support their growth, resilience, and future success. We will now have Leanne Ireland, the executive director of the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth, say a few words.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chairperson. I am, I'm in the new U.S.A. space, so I look a little funny because I was trying to get the internet to work, but we're here nonetheless. It's an incredible honour to be nominated for the Friends of Education with the Calgary Board of Education. For over two decades, U.S.A. has been tirelessly empowering indigenous youth to make sure that their voices are heard, that they feel seen, and they feel supported. We have had a partnership with the Calgary Board of Education for many years, and I feel like our partnership is really a testament to what you can do when you partner together. We're a charitable organization. We support indigenous youth between the ages of 12 and 29 who live in the city of Calgary. We provide culturally relevant, engaging, and empowering opportunities that help youth succeed academically, socially, and personally. In collaboration with the Calgary Board of Education, we have a variety of programs that operate in CBE schools. Our Spirit Pathways program is a transformative initiative that works with youth in grades seven to twelve that are culturally based. They're after-school programs, and we also support youth on non-instructional days. In that class, or in that programming, we do ribbon skirts, ribbon shirts, beating, drumming, singing. We also have elders, mentors, and cultural leaders, and we help youth navigate both in the Western world and in the indigenous world in a safe way. We also offer Indigenous Tech 101 and Medicine Wheel Warriors. Indigenous Tech 101 teaches youth about STEM programming, like 3D printing, virtual reality, augmented reality, and we teach them how to build their own apps and do some basic coding. In our Medicine Wheel Warriors, we teach them medicine wheel teachings, and then we 3D scan children, and they become their own superhero action figures. We actually print action figures that look like them, and then they get a little box that talks about their action figure persona. So for example, Rainbow Girl spreads joy and happiness to all the other people in the community. So it's a really great project. We also have James and Della's Story. These are virtual escape rooms that are interactive, story-driven narratives that teach kids about the history of residential schools and the Sixty Scoop, and helps people understand maybe some of the tensions between education and indigenous populations, and then finds ways to offer like healing and develop their support systems. Our lunch programs and early dismissals create safe and welcoming spaces where indigenous youth foster a sense of belonging and cultural pride. We also use them as what we call gateway programs to get youth introduced to programs they can access outside of school hours. Not only are our programs designed for, but they're also designed with indigenous youth, so we definitely listen to what they have to say, and they have a voice in all of the programs and activities that happen. We all know that education has historically been used as a place of disconnection and harm, and we understand that the legacy of residential schools, the Sixty Scoop, and some ongoing systemic barriers have created educational inequities. And working with the Calgary Board of Education, we know that that is, and it was proven today with that amazing land acknowledgement by the students, which was incredible. I almost want to have them come and do a land acknowledgement for us. It was so great. We know that CBE is working to make sure that students don't just survive in education, but also thrive. We have seen the efforts of the Calgary Board of Education, and we feel we're supporting those efforts and understanding that cultural connection is the key to success, that there can be healing through education, and that we're supporting the goals of reconciliation. We hope that part of our role with the CBE is to bridge the gap between indigenous and non-indigenous ways of learning and help advance truth and reconciliation and the commission's call to action. And we can see that in the work that we do with the Calgary Board of Education and with the work that we do at U.S.A. We felt, and I've worked a lot with Lori and the average education team at the CBE, that our relationship is built on respect, reciprocity, and a shared vision for indigenous youth success. And we're honoured to be nominated for this award, and I know that together we can transform the lives of indigenous students across Calgary, and I'm happy to be a part of the work that you're all doing and that you get to be a part of the work we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Leanne. Trustees, are there any questions or comments on the report? Not seeing any. I will ask if there is a trustee who would like to bring forward a motion regarding this item. Thank you, Trustee Vukadinovich. Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to move that the Board of Trustees approves Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth as the Calgary Board of Education nominee for the 2025 Alberta School Boards Association Friends of Education Award.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth as the Calgary Board of Education nominee for the 2025 Alberta School Boards Association Friends of Education Award. Trustee Vukadinovich, would you please open debate?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. I am very excited to move this motion, and I do urge my fellow trustees to vote in favor of nominating the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth as the Calgary Board of Education nominee for the 2025 Alberta School Boards Association Friends of Education Award. This award honours individuals or organizations that have a demonstrated commitment to improving and contributing to education in Alberta. I know Chair Bolger shared a few words about how the nomination process works, but I'd like to just share a bit more for any members of the public who are tuning in today. In terms of how the nomination process works, each school board in Alberta is able to nominate one nominee. ASBA then has, the Alberta School Boards Association, ASBA, has selection committees set up for each one of the five ASBA zones across Alberta, and these five selection committees will have the task of sifting through the applications of worthy nominations, worthy nominees from across Alberta, and selecting five outstanding recipients, one for each of the five ASBA zones in Alberta. The five award recipients, one representing each of the five ASBA zones, will be announced at the Fall General Meeting of Alberta School Boards later this year, which is in the mid-November of 2025. So today's nomination marks the first step in this process that will end in November with the final selection. And I certainly hope that the CBE's nominee will be one of the five recipients announced by the Alberta School Boards Association in November. But regardless of whether the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth is put forward for recognition at the province-wide meeting in November, today is our opportunity as the Calgary Board of Education to recognize and celebrate our partnership. So, folks, you have the report in front of you, and Leanne Ireland, the executive director, shared more with us today about the wonderful work that U.S.A. does. So thank you for that, Leanne. And as we can clearly see, the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth is a leading and influential organization in Calgary, dedicated to empowering indigenous youth through education, cultural programming, and innovative learning experiences. And when Executive Director Leanne Ireland spoke with us earlier, she talked about the importance of respect, reciprocity, and our shared vision for indigenous youth. And really, I think that's the key for me as well, is that shared vision that we have for empowering indigenous youth, fostering inclusion, nurturing cultural pride, and supporting academic success for indigenous students. When it comes to fostering inclusion, cultural pride, and academic success for indigenous youth students, the Aboriginal Society for Aboriginal Youth has been a steadfast partner to the CBE by working hand in hand with our educators and with local community elders, CBE administration, and other community partners to deliver very impactful school-based programs for our students. And my understanding is that this year, the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth has been directly supporting close to 400 indigenous students, and also indirectly supports thousands of indigenous and non-indigenous students through the positive impact this organization has had on the practice of our CB school leaders and teachers, like that Queen Elizabeth School presentation we just saw earlier. So we all know, I was going to say, it's trite, but it's true, that we know it takes a village to raise a child, and really, the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth is an essential part of our village. So by approving this nomination, the Board of Trustees would be able to show the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth that we recognize the value of your contribution to our schools, and we would also be showing you that we are incredibly appreciative, so grateful, of the contribution that you guys made to the success and wellbeing of our students. So I encourage my fellow trustees to vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Trustee Vukadinovich. Are there any trustees who would like to enter first round of debate? Trustee Hack, go ahead.
Absolutely. I'm thrilled to support this nomination as well. Very clear that the benefits that CBE students receive is a direct result of this partnership. This partnership is in support of our education plans, supporting students in class and outside of class. The partnership with the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth addresses the whole child, embracing students as they are, seeing the whole child or young adult, and meeting them where their interests and abilities are aligned, all in support of their individuality and their education. I want to thank the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth, Leanne Ireland, the incredible work that you do every day, and your whole team, that collaboratively supports many of our middle and high school students, as well as staff. You embody what it means to be a friend of education and support of student success. This nomination is action, not just a blanket statement toward our responsibility to truth and reconciliation as a learning organization. We couldn't do it without the support of organizations like yourself. I'm extremely grateful and can't wait to see more of what this partnership does in the future in support of student success. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hack. Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm always so grateful, and I'm really grateful for this submission of U.S.A. as their Friends of Education Award. I don't think Calgarians fully understand the scope and breadth of the partnerships that we have with many local organizations, and it's always a privilege to learn and share another fantastic partnership that aids in our sense of community as well as strengthen all of our connections. So thank you for your outstanding partnership. Your commitment to nurturing and a sense of belonging and strengthening community ties has profoundly impacted students, families, and educators. The benefits of partnership go beyond school programming, and it is fostering all these connections, celebrating diversity, and creating environments to thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee May. Go ahead, Trustee Close.
Just to add to my eloquent colleagues enthusiastically support this, Leanne and Lori. It's such an incredible opportunity for us. In fact, I guess I should thank Alberta School Boards Association for even having a Friends of Education Award so that we get to nominate and highlight and appreciate tremendous partnership. I'm lucky enough, Leanne, to have seen the work of U.S.A. through a city of Calgary perspective, and then coming back to the Board of Trustees to be able to see the work that you do with students at CBE is just incredible and in fact magical. I love the superhero piece. It just grabs my heart and head in a great way. And Lori, it was magic reading every word of this report. And for me, it lifted, and I have to read it because I always get this wrong, it lifted the Indigenous education holistic lifelong learning framework off the page and into reality. Like, it really demonstrates the work that CBE is doing in support of indigenous youth and support of reconciliation. So, Leanne, thank you so much for the incredible work that you and your organization do each and every day in our schools, but also in our community.
Thank you, Trustee Close. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bolger, and my colleagues have certainly spoken to all of the points, and so I won't be redundant and do the same, but certainly do want to say thank you so much for the work that you do with our students and supporting them both in school and outside of school. As you might know, CBE works with hundreds of partners, and the fact that this partnership has been elevated to this nomination really is a testament to the amazing work that you're doing. So thank you with a grateful heart. Thank you so much with all the work that you're doing, and I'm excited to see where we land in the mix provincially on this one. It will be exciting to watch that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Dennis. It certainly will. Well, and I'll just echo as well that, you know, we're so grateful and proud of this partnership with U.S.A., and thank you for all of your work, Leanne. It's, when reading about the 3D superheroes, I just thought that was so unique, and seeing your multitude of programming, and that you really do bridge a gap and up into students, or I guess young adults as well, out of high school. So, yeah, we just thank you so very much and look forward to continued partnership. Are there any trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Hearing none. Trustee Vukadinovich, would you like to close?
Yes, I certainly would like to. Thank you. So in closing, I do encourage my fellow trustees to vote in favor of this nomination because this is a small way in which we can say thank you to the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth for, again, the incredible work that you guys do in our city and in our schools. Over the past 20 years, the impact has been tremendous because data shows us that when youth who self-identify as indigenous participate in your programs, their high school success and high school completion increases significantly. So that's huge. So thank you to you, Leanne Ireland, and to all of the founders and donors to this organization, who saw a sense of disconnection, a loss of cultural knowledge, a deficit of respect, and said, "We can do better. We must do better because our young people deserve it, and our cities deserve it." So thank you for everything you do for connecting with our indigenous students and encouraging them to always keep indigenous cultural teachings and values strong in their hearts, to always keep family and kinship close in their circles, and to always embrace pride in the deep indigenous roots that run through this land. So thank you for everything you do, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Vukadinovich. I will now call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close?
Enthusiastically in favor.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you, in favor.
Thank you, Trustee Hack?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee May?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Vukadinovich?
In favor.
Thank you, and I also vote in favor of the motion, so that motion is carried unanimously. So once again, thank you, Leanne, so much for joining us today and sharing more of the work you do, and we are so grateful for the partnership of U.S.A. in the Calgary Board of Education. Today, we are pleased to have a school presentation from Queen Elizabeth Elementary and High School. Education Director Tink, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Bolger, today's presentation is a celebration for both schools and their work focusing on citizenship, highlighting how students develop the skills, knowledge, and values to actively contribute to their communities. From kindergarten through high school, students build a strong foundation that prepares them for life, work, and future learning. Citizenship is more than just understanding the rights and responsibilities. It is about active participation in a democratic society, respect for diversity and inclusion, environmental stewardship, and the ability to lead and collaborate in pursuit of shared goals. Throughout their journey, students learn what it means to be responsible citizens, whether by engaging in civic life, building positive relationships, or making meaningful contributions to their local and global communities. At its core, this journey ensures that each student is equipped with the knowledge, skills, and sense of responsibility needed to thrive as citizens. And I'll turn it over to Principal Lisa McConnell, who will introduce the student video.
Thank you very much, Ms. Director Tink. Again, trustees, superintendent, superintendents, chief superintendent, directors, and audience, thank you for the opportunity to present today. The commitment to reconciliation action shared earlier and the CBE results, specifically Result Three Citizenship, is what brings us to our combined Queen Elizabeth School and Queen Elizabeth High School presentation today. Although we're two separate schools, we wanted to share the story of the journey our students take as developing citizens from kindergarten to grade 12. Our focus on the CBE results, specifically Result Number Three Citizenship, has resulted in curricular programming that actively engages students to demonstrate citizenship competencies that foster the skills and understanding of individual and collective citizenship roles in their school, neighborhood, city, and beyond. Please enjoy the video.
In kindergarten, we engage in Traveling Tuesday. Every Tuesday, we venture out into our community, taking our learning beyond the classroom and into the local environment. This hands-on approach is a cornerstone of kindergarten teaching, connecting all areas of the curriculum. Our students are immersed in the rich heritage, culture, ecology, landscapes, and experiences in our community. By focusing on real-world learning, we strengthen academic performance through deeper connection to this place we call home. At QES, we believe that fostering a genuine appreciation for the natural world inspires a sense of responsibility, empowering students to become active, engaged citizens. QES students see the impact of their efforts in the community, helping them develop vital communication and problem-solving skills, teaching them how to interact with various environments, and giving them a deeper understanding of themselves and the place in this world. We've worked hard to infuse kindness and a love of learning into our neighborhood, and in return, our community has warmly embraced us. It's not uncommon for someone to rush out of their home or business to share a new plant, an exciting seed pod, or details about a local mural. We know where our classmates live because we've walked by their homes, and we're able to discuss new developments in the area because contractors have shared their blueprints with us. Every community takes pride in its neighborhood, and when we listen to its stories, rich learning opportunities unfold. When kindergarten students step outside to learn, something magical happens. The four walls of the classrooms are not boundaries to their education. Children naturally thrive as they are more open to learning through the authentic teachable moments, whether from teachers, neighbors, or classmates.
As grade two, three teachers, we strive to create engaging, real-world learning experiences to help students understand their roles as responsible citizens. Through the Indigenous Wise Practice of Reflection Outside, our weekly community walks engage students to observe the land, learn from it, and explore how the community supports us. By incorporating Indigenous pedagogies such as sit spots and walk-alongs, we encourage students to slow down, reflect on their surroundings, and build connections to the land and community.
In math, we bring real-world concepts to plan. For example, we set up classroom shops where students practice buying and selling items, learning to make change and budget. This addresses our school development plan goal to build their procedural fluency and conceptual understanding, but that also teaches them about economic responsibility.
As a grade team, our learning centers around questions like, "What is our human impact?" and "How do stories teach and connect us?" These interconnected inquiries help students recognize how stories have the power to shape our understanding of the world and our place in it. Through our participation in the Campus Calgary Open Minds Field Experiences, such as Two School, Library School, STEM Pete School, and City Hall School, students gain real-world opportunities to connect their learning in school to their own community.
These immersive experiences allow students to explore the histories and functions of local institutions, engage with experts, and draw inspiration for projects that address community needs. This combination of hands-on learning and storytelling fosters a deeper appreciation for how our choices, narratives, and actions intersect, empowering students to contribute thoughtfully to their communities. In professional learning communities or through collaborative response, we prioritize practices that reflect real-world engagement. Students demonstrate learning through hands-on projects, presentations, and participation in community events, such as creating a plan to improve a local space, like the new Calgary Arena, or engaging in meaningful community outreach initiatives, such as our donation collection for the mustard seed. By focusing on meaningful tasks, we help students see how their learning contributes to issues of common concern, fostering a sense of responsibility and pride in their ability to make a difference.
Through these practices, our goal is to nurture curious, caring, and active citizens who understand their rights and responsibilities within their local and national communities.
At QES, as part of their development as citizens, students are invited to propose ideas for clubs that are both needed and that will impact our school positively. As a result, there are many opportunities for engagement in extracurricular activities. These include History Club, Howlers, which is a news club, Math and Science Clubs, and many more. Lisa Kelly and her daughter Neve will reflect on the impact of this engagement on the development of learning competencies and how students can learn from each other to build collective citizenship skills.
I have always helped others, and Kindness Keepers helped me to extend that to more people so everyone was included. At our school, we have a student-led group that looks for things to make better. Last year, we took leadership at recess with a group called Kindness Keepers. Every Thursday, we'd make up games, wore piddies, and invited lots of others to play. The best game was when we challenged the whole school to make the biggest snowman they could. Making announcements for the Kindness Keepers helped me feel like a leader. I am looking forward for grade seven at QES because it is only one grade up. I know I can be ready because I know I can impact people positively in my small circle, and they will impact others.
As Neve's parent, I am delighted to see her confidence and independence skyrocket in the past few years. Thanks to opportunities in schools such as cross and patrol, kindness keepers, class elections, making announcements, and choir, to name a few, she's excelled in leadership, mentoring, and ownership. Outside of school, she's a patrol leader in Girl Guides and a program assistant in the local Learn to Skate program. And I believe without the opportunities in school, she wouldn't have been as confident or prepared to take on these responsibilities. School is her community. She's invested in it and wants fairness for everyone. The opportunities she has had has enabled her not just to identify problems, but to find solutions to problems, work with others, and be responsible for her learning. As a parent, I'm excited to see where the next stage of her journey takes us. I know she's well-equipped and ready for it.
As Neve shared, the transition between grade six and seven from QES to QEHS is seamless. This is a result of the implementation of the programming at each school for the development of citizenship. Through the student voice in clubs, the engagement in community events of common concern, and our shared space, students see the ways they can act on behalf of themselves and others in our community.
When students see themselves as a part of a shared community, they begin to feel a sense of pride and responsibility for the land and the people. As students get older, they develop a greater sense of responsibility to give back to and to contribute to their community. Students must learn to become active and engaged citizens who not only get out and interact with the community, but care for it and help it thrive. At Queen Elizabeth High School, we have to be really intentional in our programming for our middle school learners. We work to help them see their place in the larger community. One of the ways we do this is through our outdoor ed program. We get the kids out into the community and help them become a part of the community.
Our outdoor education program is part of the grade seven option wheel. So our students come to us with a variety of experiences, abilities, and attitudes toward being outdoors. We also have a learning community of diverse learners from varied backgrounds and ways of learning. We bring our students outside fundamentally because we want them to learn to be a part of the world around them, both as citizens who need to learn to live with and interact with the broader community, and to have them start to understand themselves as a part of the ecosystems that they live in. We focus most of our introductory grade seven program on local community trips and the fundamental skills needed to be comfortable learning outdoors, such as dressing for the weather, sharing public spaces, and the elements of environmental stewardship. We start with the Leave No Trace Principles, which align nicely with our citizenship ends and include the ideas of respecting oneself, working with and respecting others, and respecting the earth. We choose outdoor activities and lessons that challenge students to work with a variety of their peers and in ways that they don't inside classroom walls. It's heartening to see students out in the community applying their skills as leaders, helping to teach elementary school students orienteering skills, speaking to younger students who might not know English in their own language, and guiding them through the lessons that they only just learned with ease and authority. It's also heartening to see the ways that students show up for each other when they're challenged with an unfamiliar situation, like learning to skate or to cycle. I'm always proud of how our students conduct themselves in these unfamiliar and sometimes unpredictable situations that happen when you remove the classroom walls and make the world outside their classroom instead.
In grade eight and nine, students get more choice in their options, and we see many of those students with minimal outdoor experience return because they enjoyed grade seven so much. This is when we begin looking at nature with a wider scope. We start to adventure further away from the school, visiting provincial and national parks outside of the city. Because we are in more remote areas, students can really see our Leave No Trace Principles in action. We compare the environments we learn in, and we witness firsthand the impacts humans have on nature. These remote areas also allow us to foster a strong sense of community, cooperation, and responsibility for yourself as a group member. We have students from our gifted and talented program, deaf and hard of hearing, the mental health class, and a variety of physical and learning differences. All students are included in all outings, and we work together to support and challenge each other so that everyone finds success in each trip. We focus primarily on learning and growing in shared spaces, such as parks, pathways, and playgrounds. Students consistently support each other. They lend extra warm clothes. They try to learn each other's languages, whether that's ASL or Ukrainian. They help fix broken gear. They wait for slower group members and are always respectful and kind with any service providers that we use. I have never received so many compliments about how wonderful our program and students are as I do from bus drivers, service providers, and members of the public who see us out using pathways and parks.
Ensuring students regularly engage with their larger community is essential in helping them learn how to take responsibility and care for their community. Our grade nine health students and high school leadership students regularly walk over next door to the elementary school to work with the younger students. For many of our middle and high school students, this is an extremely meaningful part of their week.
The work we do with younger students really helps build their confidence as they grow up. When we bring things like compassion and fun into the classroom, it can encourage them to succeed as they move on to junior high and high school. The lessons we help them learn about lifelong learning and responsibility can help them become more responsible people in the larger community.
I enjoy, I guess, using the knowledge that I have gained throughout my life to sort of help them, you know, be better at school. Well, I feel like it definitely makes kids more comfortable with people older than them. Like, when I was in elementary, I was afraid of, like, the grade six kids in my school building. And I feel like when you work with them, it sort of, kind of, allows them to open up a bit and be more themselves around people older than them.
In high school, we focus on how to help students understand the rights and responsibilities of citizenship within local, national, and international contexts.
Our current world is seemingly divided, and many of us have become accustomed to consuming information in ways that promote dichotomous thinking and confirmation bias, leading to deepening the bias and narrowing perspectives.
This year, at Queen Elizabeth High School, we introduced the AP Capstone Seminar course to intentionally and explicitly teach students how to evaluate various sources of information and how to form and support an effective argument that examines issues through multiple diverse lenses.
Through AP Capstone Seminar, students are well-prepared to consume information through a critical lens and use their findings to form well-rounded opinions and well-supported arguments as 21st century citizens.
Capstone helps me develop critical thinking, research, and communication skills, which are essential for being an informed and engaged citizen. It pushes me to further analyze different perspectives and make ethical considerations and form well-reasoned arguments. These skills will help me navigate complex, real-world issues and contribute meaningfully to society after high school.
Throughout the semester, I've been exposed to situations that have allowed me to take on leadership roles and collaborate effectively with individuals I have never worked with. Because of this, I was taught the importance of effective communication, meaning the ability to speak my mind while giving respectful but honest feedback.
I'd say Capstone, it gives you a unique perspective on a lot of issues that are happening in the world. So Capstone gives you a unique opportunity, I think, to reflect on those kinds of issues in the modern age.
The skills that I learned throughout this course, such as establishing the credibility of sources, teamwork, time management, and developing proper research skills, really allow me to feel more confident in my goals. These skills are also super useful for areas other than school, such as waking up in the morning and being able to read the paper with confidence.
Capstone has really helped me with a lot of skills, such as, like, being able to work with a team and being able to do proper research. And I think that after high school, that's really going to help me with when it comes to writing papers or when I have to do group work in either university or at a teacher job that I might have.
I think the AP Capstone has helped me work on a lot of my collaborative skills with peers, and in doing so, I think that my communication skills have been encouraged to improve, which is bound to help me in any path that I choose to take on after graduation because those communication skills will be so effective and necessary anywhere.
Sure Citizens is really the evolution of children, from early learners who contribute to their local communities into productive and responsible adults in the broader world. Citizenship is situated in the community and is developed through explicit instruction, experiential learning, honoring the land and its stories, and asking big questions. CBE staff's role is to help guide students to build connections to our shared land and spaces and to each other. Once these connections are built, they foster a sense of responsibility that ensures students leave the CBE able to rise to the complex challenge of being a global citizen in the modern world. When you step back and you look at the whole path from kindergarten to graduation, you realize what a great privilege it is to walk alongside our students on their path to citizenship. It has truly been an honor for us to be able to share their growth and accomplishments with you today. Thank you.
Wow, well, I would just say honestly, as CBE trustees or parents and citizens of Calgary, we are so fortunate. That was just a fantastic display. And like you said, the full K-12 continuum. And this is, this presentation really embodies everything we want to see in every school. And how incredible, honestly, and I thought the video should go viral. That might be just a great way to share this incredible work. Yeah, just so many things. And you can just tell your passion in listening to the students and the parents, like, just fantastic. So thank you so much. And, yeah, we really appreciate your time creating this. We also, of course, land acknowledgement, so incredible to learn about the Indigenous sign language and then see it performed in A.L.A.S.L. And, yeah, and the National Anthem too. So thank you all for your time and for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Next on our agenda is item 7.1, a board development session on outcomes-based assessment. Superintendent Turner, would you please introduce the presentation?
Good morning, trustees. I know that they are just in the process right now of switching from one presentation group to the other, but it is my sincere pleasure to be able to introduce Dr. Laurie Cooper. Dr. Cooper is the Education Director in Area Four, and she is also one of the individuals holding the portfolio of Core Curriculum and Assessment. And it is also my pleasure to introduce Michelle Howell. Michelle Howell is Education Director in Area Six. And Michelle holds the portfolio of high school, leadership and development, and program evaluation. And they are here today to share a variety of pieces of information that I believe that you will enjoy around outcomes-based assessment. So welcome, Dr. Cooper and Michelle Howell.
Good morning, trustees, superintendents, and guests. My name is Laurie Cooper, and I'm the Education Director, as mentioned, of Core Curriculum Assessment, as well as one of the Directors for Area Four.
And Michelle Howell, as mentioned, Education Director in Area Six, and have the pleasure of also supporting high schools and program evaluation.
We are excited to be here today to talk to you about outcomes-based assessment and how this work is supporting high schools with fair, transparent, and equitable assessment practices. Today, we're going to unpack what we mean by outcomes-based assessment, or how we often reference it, OVA. Throughout this presentation, we'll deepen our understanding of how OVA focuses on student growth and understanding, how it creates clear and fair assessments and provides students and parents meaningful feedback about learning, and how grades are determined using clear criteria and levels of understanding which aligns with Alberta Education's Program of Studies. Throughout this presentation, we will hear from students, parents, teachers, and administrators talk about their own experiences with OVA. We hope that by the end, you'll have a better understanding of what OVA is and how it equitably impacts teaching and learning. and how it equitably impacts teaching and learning. As we begin this conversation about outcomes-based assessment, it's important to understand why this approach is being implemented and where we are in the process. The concept of OBA is nothing new. Back in 2009, Alberta Education launched the High School Flexibility Enhancement Pilot, encouraging schools to explore new approaches to assessment and student success. Since then, educational research has continued to reinforce that assessment works best when it clearly communicates student progress, focuses on mastery of key skills, and provides meaningful feedback to guide learning. CBE has been gradually building towards this shift. Many high schools have been implementing aspects of outcomes-based assessment for a number of years. More recently, all high schools across CBE have been working together to create resources and shared approaches to support consistency and clarity in assessment. To support a smooth transition, we are taking a slow and steady approach to implementation. This year, all high schools have implemented at least one grade 10 core OBA course, like social studies. Next year, we plan to expand to two core courses, like social studies and science, and one complementary course, like arts, at the grade 10 level. Beyond that, while we have a long-term plan, we are taking a responsive approach in consideration of feedback and resources as we get them. The goal is to build capacity and refine best practices to ensure meaningful impact. As you know, the education plan identifies learning excellence as a board priority, describing it as strong student achievement for lifelong learning and success. OBA supports this priority by developing in students critical thinking, problem-solving, and adaptability, skills essential for future educational and career pathways and lifelong success. A key outcome within this priority is to improve student learning through fair and equitable assessment practices and identifies aligning practices with the five guiding principles of assessment as an action for achieving this target. These five guiding principles are seen on the graphic on the screen in front of you. OBA fully supports these principles by communicating clear and meaningful assessment information to students and families, encouraging active student involvement in the assessment process, and embedding ongoing assessment to support student growth. By fostering transparent and equitable assessment practices, OBA strengthens the connection between learning goals, assessment methods, and student achievement, fully aligning with the vision of the education plan. Together, OBA and the education plan support classrooms that are inclusive and focused on student growth, providing all students with equitable opportunities to succeed. We're now going to hear from some students, parents, assistant principals, and principals about their experience with how OBA promotes fairness, equity, and clarity while equipping students with essential skills for lifelong learning.
Well, transparency and fairness are really at the heart of outcomes-based assessment. The calibration of clearly defined, visible expectations for each outcome ensures transparency and reliability of assessment practices. So when all students are assessed using the same criteria, we also reduce subjectivity and ensure equitable practices for students.
Yeah, I think there's different ingredients that comprise OBA, but I think at the heart of it are those five guiding principles of assessment that we know and love in CBE. The fair, transparent, equitable, the involving students in the assessment process.
It's more specific than without outcome-based. So you could, you could see exactly what you needed to do. And then when we were marked by the rubric, we could see exactly what we were missing and exactly how to improve the next step.
It actually sets students up for success because it promotes equity in the assessment process because it looks at every individual student and their progress and achievement towards the set outcomes. And it really fosters agency in their learning because they know what the expectations are, they know where they're at, they know where they've come from, and they know what they need to do.
Having somebody's, like those bullet points from each target helps you understand, like, what you need to do. Like what you need to focus on instead of like, you know, having this one huge piece of information.
It also allows teachers to work and collaborate with one another and have a shared understanding of what that different proficiency level of those outcomes may look like, reducing the imbalance or maybe the discrepancy that might happen between the classroom to classroom or school to school. So it really tightens up, and I'd say it probably makes the assessment more fair. It also allows teachers to work and collaborate with one another.
When we focus on the outcomes themselves and not the tasks, but also not the behaviors that sometimes get tangled into our assessment, we're reducing grade distortion and we're actually reducing the possibility that unconscious bias that we hold as educators might influence a student's grade.
This actually benefits me on, so I can actually know what I need to work on in the future.
So I think that when we look at student learning and students understanding the transparency of their learning, outcome-based assessment can be a powerful tool to move themselves forward and to prepare them for advocating for themselves and understanding themselves as a learner.
Stories of lived experience can be so powerful. The video you just watched highlights how outcomes-based assessment ensures fairness, transparency, and equity by clearly defining expectation, reducing subjectivity, and fostering student agency in their learning. Now let's explore what that looks like in practice. OBA views learning as a process, developing competencies that extend beyond the classroom, supporting lifelong learning. OBA ensures consistency by measuring what students know and can do based on Alberta's curriculum. OBA prioritizes the most consistent and most recent evidence of learning, helping students build proficiency and work towards mastery over time. OBA provides clarity by focusing on students' strengths and areas for growth. OBA gives students multiple opportunities to deepen their understanding, receive feedback, and demonstrate growth rather than relying on averages. OBA, through the process of calibration, helps tutors align expectations, ensuring equitable assessment for all students. OBA helps students take ownership of their learning by encouraging student engagement. But don't take our word for it. In this next video, we will hear from teachers and administrators about how OBA has helped students focus on the learning by making clear what they need to know to be successful.
Outcomes-based assessment is looking at the big things in the curriculum that we want students to know and be able to do.
Outcomes-based assessment is really just assessment. And it's looking at it through a lens of what a student is able to do and what they know rather than a series of assignments.
Outcome-based assessment takes our curricular outcomes, and it has us assessing the students based simply on those. So students can use a variety of different ways to show their understanding of an outcome and pick kind of the way that works to their strength.
Now, it's to what extent do you understand this concept? Or can you demonstrate this skill based on a certain set of criteria that we have for an outcome in the program of studies?
I think the big thing with OBA is that it's really changed the conversation around grading and reporting from a currency to more of a communication about student learning. So it really invites students to be a part of the process of assessment rather than this mysterious mark that's generated at the end. They really have an active role in how they progress through their work.
But on the whole, I would say what outcome-based assessment really is, is it's about a system that supports fair, transparent, and equitable assessment practices.
So now that we've explored what outcomes-based assessment is, let's take a look at how it differs from traditional assessment and why the shift is important for student learning. To support us in understanding this difference, it's important to recognize the limitations of traditional grading systems in measuring student understanding. Think back to your own school experience. Most of us remember receiving a final grade based on an average of all tasks completed through the course. Homework, assignments, quizzes, tests, all contributed to a final percentage. But here's the problem. The system often measures task completion or correctness rather than actual understanding. For example, you'll see on this graphic, imagine three students who take the same multiple choice test and each scores seven out of 10. While their grade is identical, their levels of understanding may be vastly different. For example, you see our first graphic of our first student. One student fully understands the material but misread or overthought the questions. Another guessed on a few questions and lacks foundational knowledge. And the third student knows the content but struggled due to test anxiety. Despite their different levels of understanding, their grades are recorded the same way, and that seven out of 10 becomes a permanent part of their mark, overshadowing what they actually know or what they might demonstrate in the future. OBA works differently. Instead of focusing on points or tasks, it centers on what students know and how well they demonstrate their understanding of the learning outcomes. Final grades are based on the most current or consistent evidence of understanding, reflecting student growth and mastery rather than simply averaging performance over time. So how does grading work in OBA? Instead of just counting points, OBA uses a proficiency scale to assess learning. Let's break down what that looks like in practice. First, the use of proficiency scales and rubric is not new. Starting in 2013, aligning with current educational research, new CBE high schools developed and used their own school-based proficiency scales to assess student learning. Recognizing a need for consistency and equity across schools, the CBE introduced a formal assessment and reporting policy in 2019. And by 2020, following consultation with students, parents, and teachers, a system-wide high school proficiency scale was finalized, providing more consistency in assessment practices across schools. This shift moved assessment away from those traditional points-based systems where students collect marks by completing a set of number, a set number of assignments towards a proficiency-based approach that focuses on the depth of understanding. Points-based grading often only tells us if a student got the right answer, as illustrated in the example where three students received seven out of 10 on a test. But as previously mentioned, a score like that doesn't explain how well they understood the materials or where they needed to improve. A proficiency scale is different. It focuses on how well students understand the material and helps teachers give better feedback to guide their progress. Without outcomes-based assessment, the focus is on where students are in their learning journey. Outcome-based assessment highlights their growth, identifies areas for improvement, and gives a clearer picture of what they know and can do rather than just adding up points. Now that we've looked at how students are assessed, let's turn our attention to what is being assessed, the outcomes. Outcomes are specific learning goals identified in PowerSchool that align with the Alberta education curriculum. By using these clearly defined outcomes, we ensure that students across different schools are held to the same learning expectations. This consistency makes assessments more fair and equitable, and as every CBE student is assessed on the same outcomes, no matter their school or their teacher. For example, let's take a look at the social studies 10-1 outcomes that you see here on the graphic, which you will see with OBA, all students in social studies 10-1 classes across CBE work toward and are assessed against these same outcomes. The weightings of each outcome toward the final grade shown at the end of each outcome is also consistent for all students. This ensures that every CBE student experience is fair and equitable for assessment practice. So how does all of this work? Let's hear again from those who are living it.
In class, I often talk about the proficiency scale and OBA as a spectrum of learning.
With outcomes-based assessment, we give very specific feedback to that outcome and what things students have achieved and what things they can work on to move their mark to that next level.
And these are all the success criteria that you need to meet in order to reach the next level of those success criteria.
Ultimately, we're working towards the students having mastery out of all, over all of the curricular outcomes in any given subject.
And then it allows me to have that conversation with them to be like, okay, look, here's our little outcomes-based roadmap. This is where you're currently at. These are the skills that you're able to do, and these are the skills you're not able to do. So let's focus on working together on these skills. It's about where are students at and how do we take them from where they're at to the next level?
Daughter though says that she does like it because it gives her more of a sense of what to do with it, right? Like what, how do I get better from 75 versus PR2? And the rubric, it would tell her what that means and what she needs to do more or less of.
As the video highlighted, outcomes-based assessment provides students with clear feedback, helping them understand the progress and next steps. To ensure consistency and fairness in assessments, teachers collaborate with colleagues from other schools to align expectations and grading practices across CBE. Teachers play a crucial role in student success, but without regular collaboration, they might interpret learning outcomes differently. One teacher might focus on different content, assuming students know certain things or have a different idea of what success looks like than another teacher. Historically, this has led to inconsistencies in grading, impacting student confidence, motivation, and overall equity. To address this through professional learning, teachers across CBE schools come together to calibrate their understanding of course outcomes. Calibration helps align grading practices to ensure fairness, accuracy, and consistency in assessments. Through calibration, teachers increase understanding by developing a shared interpretation of what the learning outcomes mean and what proficiency looks like. Teachers increase accuracy by refining assessment practices so that student learning is measured fairly. Teachers increase consistency by applying the proficiency scale and success criteria in the same way across classrooms. And teachers increase equity by assessing all students by the same standards regardless of teacher or school. Without calibration, two students with similar work could receive different grades simply because their teachers interpreted the learning outcomes differently. By regular calibrating, teachers align their grading practices, ensuring all CBE students are assessed fairly and equitably, giving every student the best chance to succeed.
Bringing teachers together to look at a common assessment and then to look at the program of studies, the part of the program of studies that that assessment is assessing student learning from.
Take time to calibrate as a group and make sure that what one person sees as a proficient mark, so does the other person.
We talk about the discussions among schools. I find it helps put all the schools at kind of an equal playing field so that the experiences that one student gets at one school is reflected the same way at another school.
So being able to talk to a teacher from Nelson Mandela, for example, or a teacher from Western and kind of getting like, you know, like a diverse group of teachers teaching, you know, diverse students in diverse parts of the city. I think it provides a degree of consistency of what is an exemplary for a particular learning outcome.
I have never known my program of studies better than doing outcomes-based assessment because it really forces me to be mindful of all the different sub-outcomes that are necessary.
What we've found is as teachers collaborate more and as they start to dig into the tasks and have a common understanding of the outcome, that it's actually raising the bar and a bar that actually students are aiming for. and a bar that actually students are aiming for and achieving and having success.
As Jonathan mentioned in the video, considering diverse perspectives from across CBE helps clarify what it means to excel. By working together across schools, teachers ensure that assessments consistently align with curriculum outcomes and that grading practices are equitable for CBE students. This shared understanding improves fairness and provides students with clearer, more meaningful feedback to support their growth and success. Educational research shows that students are more engaged in learning when they receive actionable feedback rather than just a grade. Outcomes-based assessment makes this possible by shifting the focus from tallying points to meaningful feedback that moves learning forward. OBA also provides flexibility by assessing students on their current level of understanding rather than their past struggles. This approach allows those who need more time to develop mastery without penalty, while recognizing those who demonstrate mastery early. Ultimately, this isn't just a change in grading. This is a shift in mindset. By prioritizing mastery over completion, OBA fosters a more accurate, equitable, and supportive learning environment for all students.
This is what I love the most about outcomes assessment is the conversations have completely changed between me and students. Before, it might have been something like, well, how many things do I need to complete before I can pass three? Can I do something else for bonus? And all the time, it felt unauthentic. Outcomes assessment allows the relationship to be completely different. So it's me and the student against the standard.
It really fosters agency in their learning because they know what the expectations are. They know where they're at. They know where they've come from and they know what they need to do.
I think outcome-based assessment provides a helpful tool to be able to know what I have to work on in the future. And then they put those feedbacks in the certain outcomes. Whatever grade I get on each outcome kind of gives me an idea of what I need to study or what I need help on to ask a teacher for help or work on it by myself.
It's giving the students more agency. I think they're really much more of a partner in the learning with the teacher.
It focuses on the mastery instead of just simply completing specific tasks. It allows students to build on their strengths and demonstrate their learning of an outcome in a way that makes sense for them. It allows for greater personalization of learning.
I think it helps them also better understand what is expected of them as well because it's specific tangible things that can be done to get them to those outcomes.
The self-awareness for them allows them to understand who they are as a learner and what it is that they specifically need for the growth that they want to achieve.
I think it's really helpful just knowing what specific areas of the assignment that I can improve on rather than just getting, you know, one grade and then you're not quite sure where you went wrong or what was right.
There's a huge difference in just looking at a grade on a piece of paper, just like a total percentage grade on a piece of paper, rather than having like a comprehensive overview of where you excel and where you need more help with outcomes-based assessment.
It no longer becomes, oh, I got a higher mark than you. It's more about this is where I'm at in my learning. This is what I need to do to get to the next step. So this is what I'm going to do.
It allows us to improve our understanding of concepts that we may not yet know or might need help getting to a point where we actually understand them.
I think the biggest impact is that decrease of anxiety, relaxing, taking some control over their own learning.
From a wellness perspective, the growth-oriented approach of outcomes-based assessment gives students a sense of control and accomplishment, helping to ease anxiety while improving student success.
So what we're doing is we're improving that self-advocacy skill. And that self-advocacy skill is going to give them the strengths, you know, that they need in the real world to be successful.
So with outcomes-based assessment, students gain a clear understanding of their progress, strengths, and areas for improvement, fostering self-awareness and ownership of their learning. This increased transparency also benefits parents, providing them with more detailed, more meaningful insights into their child's learning journey beyond just a single grade or percentage. So how does OBA help families understand and support their child's learning journey? Within an OBA, instead of just seeing a single grade like that seven out of 10 on a lab assignment, which doesn't tell a parent much beyond a number, they'll see specific information about their child's progress. The image on the screen is the parent view of the Stems and Outcomes tab in Power School when viewed through my CBE web browser. We appreciate that many families are used to using the Power School app, which has led to some frustration due to its limitations. We have and will continue to work with students and families to support them in using the web browser version to be able to see a more complete picture of a student's learning journey. In this example, in the left column, we can see the learning outcomes and the right column has the levels of proficiency achieved for each outcome in term three. Through Power School, we see that they're proficient in one outcome, developing in another, and showing exemplary understanding in a third. Think about the conversations parents could have with their child, asking them about where they're excelling in and where they feel they need more support. In Power School, a parent can even go deeper by looking at the assessments that contribute to the grade for each individual outcome. This means parents are not just seeing a final mark. They can track progress over time, notice trends in learning, and see how consistency their child or how consistently their child is demonstrating their understanding. Whether it was a lab discussion, a project, a test, what matters is their grasp of the outcome itself, not just how they performed on one particular task. This gives parents a fuller, more accurate picture of their child's learning journey. Because OBA is built around clearly defined success criteria and a proficiency scale, parents will always know what their child is expected to learn and how well they are meeting those expectations. This transparency helps build confidence in the assessment process, not just for students, but for parents too. On top of that, the focus on meaningful feedback means students aren't just receiving a grade. They're getting guidance on how to improve. This way, they're not left wondering what went wrong or what they should do next. They have a clear path forward in their learning. Ultimately, OBA gives parents a more complete and accurate picture of their child's progress, helping them stay informed and engaged in their child's education in a way that supports their success, as you will hear from a teacher in the next video.
When communicating with parents, I think it helps them see exactly where their child is at. And so when we're having a conversation maybe about a student who is struggling, they really understand what a student needs to do. It's looking at where they're really being successful. And I think that that's helped parents to understand how their child is actually doing within that class and helps them to feel that their child is being successful in certain areas.
Overall, I really like outcomes-based assessment, especially the ability to like explain to my parents, this is what I'm more proficient in. This is where, you know, I'm going to be focusing more of my time in.
She would be able to explain, okay, I need to know my definitions on this unit more. So can you quiz me on this or, you know, that type of thing? It does help her to decipher, like, okay, well, then what do I do next?
Last round of interviews, I had a parent come, what are they missing? And I said, well, they're missing three things. But the problem isn't that they're missing things. The problem is that in this outcome, they're consistently at this level. They're consistently at a developing level. And because of that, every time they submit something, it doesn't improve their grade. I could show the parent in that interview that I did, an example of the student work. And I said, here's what they're able to do. And then I was able to show them an anonymous one that we had used in a calibration session in order to say, this is the standard of what we're hoping for. And the parent was able to see, oh, what my student has done is not quite the standard that you're looking for. That's very clear.
It just makes the conversation, especially in parent-teacher interviews, it just makes the conversation flow a little bit like smoother in terms of like really figuring out where I can improve.
I think it's helped me help her more too because it gives me a better understanding of kind of what they're teaching and how they're teaching, how they want her to get to, that understanding.
When I share that with parents, that the proficiency scale and success criteria is something that helps to motivate students to be more proactive in their learning, I think that that helps to appease a lot of the concerns that parents have. Because I think that's a goal that a lot of parents have for their kids. Like they want them to be, become functional, independent members of society.
I think it's good to hear feedback from parents when they are seeing the assessments instead of just a grade, right? They're seeing kind of that actual feedback and they feel like they're a part of that process as well.
It's a shift in conversation with students and families, I find. The moment that we can talk about the learning and not talk about the actual task, to me, that's a massive positive.
Outcomes-based assessment fosters meaningful conversations between students, parents, and teachers by providing clear insights into a student's progress and next steps for learning. At the start of today's session, we introduce outcomes-based assessment as a student-centered approach that prioritizes growth and mastery through clear, fair, and transparent assessment practices. We hope that through today's presentation it's become evident that OBA is more than just a method of assessment. It is truly a shift in how we understand and support student learning.
The best thing about outcomes-based thinking in our classrooms is it shifts the conversation. It focuses it on the thing that matters, which is the learning.
What's the purpose of learning? And when we teach students that learning is about being lifelong learners, I think that's where outcome-based assessment really rings true, where we can really support them in seeing themselves as lifelong learners and moving towards like a life of learning, towards a life of bettering yourself and wanting to do better.
So we're seeing lower failure rates, which is better for student mental health and better for a sense of, you know what, I'm going to find my way here. There is more time and flexibility for the course to occur at the pace that it needs to occur in. There's more time for students to begin to build relationship, which is so important for all students, but often crucial for some of our indigenous learners. And so that extra time built, build that relationship and then show learning in the presence of relationship with that educator is really providing opportunities for growth and success that have previously not been visible.
And that's really promising as an administrator to see more students hopefully obtaining their high school diploma and seeing the pathways to making sure they get to where they want to be at the end of high school.
It isn't just about that percentage grade. At the end of the day, these are skills we'll take for the rest of our lives. And like sometimes that importance isn't placed on like, this isn't just about like getting that 85 or 90. Like this is like going to set you up for your future.
As you've heard today, outcomes-based assessment honors each student's individual abilities and gifts. Through this shift in assessment practices, outcomes-based assessment is raising expectations for academic achievement for all students aligned to the curriculum, increasing accountability of students for demonstrating what they know and can do according to the outcomes and how they challenge themselves to improve, removing the guesswork for students on how to improve, and ensuring that our classroom assessments most accurately reflect the key outcomes of the curriculum, which will set our students up for success in the workplace or in post-secondary programs. It is through these fair, transparent, and equitable assessment practices that we are creating the conditions for every CBE student to succeed. Thank you for your time, engagement, and commitment to supporting student success. Now I'm going to open the floor for questions based on outcomes-based assessment.
Thank you very much. Trustees, questions or comments on the presentation? Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. At the beginning, oh, sorry. At the beginning, there was a slide that talks about where we're at. And so it showed that we are doing one, I think, grade 10 course that every high school and next year's two. Is there, what's kind of the final destination? Is it to have every grade, every, every course in high school? Or kind of what's kind of the upcoming transition, at least for the next couple of years?
Go ahead, Lori or Michelle.
So we have a long-term plan in terms of, we mentioned that we're doing slow, very thoughtful progress in terms of always checking in. So we're basing that really on school readiness. But as a system, we see this moving forward. So while we started with grade 10, we are moving forward with our 20 level or our grade 11. And we'd like to progress as well as we move forward for our 30 level eventually as well. But again, that's going to be based on our readiness of our schools, always checking in in terms of our feedback and conversations that we're having in terms of the quality of our assessments and what we're hearing from our leaders and our teachers through readiness. Slow and measured, slow and measured.
Thank you. Trustee Bukedinovich?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. I'm wondering, would this move towards outcomes-based assessment? Whether we might see the report card system updated? Because if the report card results are based on outcomes assessment and parents can already, and students can already see that in Power School, do we still need teachers to vote individual comments for each student? And wouldn't parents get what they need to know just by tracking the assessments for different outcomes? So basically, I'm just wondering if outcomes-based assessment might help to simplify report card writing in the future?
Thank you, through the chair. And report cards are a requirement of Alberta education. And so report cards will remain in place and an important tool of communicating results between teacher and family. And while report cards can summarize achievement, ongoing assessment data found in digital grade books such as Power School can also provide parents with a clearer, more detailed picture of progress. Although those are supportive tools and ways in which parents can gather additional information, we wouldn't be seeing a removal or a moving away from a standard report card that parents would more traditionally be expecting. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Turner. Trustee May?
Thank you. I really appreciate the reiterating that it is a slow and measured progress with lots of feedback. I think that's really important. And I think that'll make parents feel a little bit better too because change is hard. Change can be fantastic, but change is hard. One thing, I guess this might even play into how fast a school progresses. But I'm wondering, how does communication work with families? So we're seeing a trend of students entering high school with a lower level language proficiency. And so perhaps them or their family may not have as much mastery of the English language. And so I'm just wondering how do we, this works great, I think. But I think where do we help kind of bridge those communication barriers that might occur?
Through the chair, I'll answer this question. Teachers and school staff engage in direct conversations, both in person, actually, many ways, in person, over the phone, through electronic communication, parent-teacher interviews and parent-teacher conferences, as well as using digital platforms to ensure families have the information that they need about their child's learning. As a system, we have access to interpreting services to support conversations with families and we utilize them quite frequently.
Thank you. Trustee Bukedinovich?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. Lots of interesting things in the presentation. And I like the phrase that it's, OBA prioritizes mastery over completion. So that does land with me. But at the same time, I do have a question about that completion. How do teachers support students not handing in assignments or not meeting that completion piece? How do teachers support students with that?
Thank you, through the chair. And so teachers, while OBA is, the goal of OBA is to provide clear, transparent understanding of expectations for students. And so while there may be an opportunity for teachers within OBA to ensure that students are understanding what are their intended expectations, their learning expectations, where students are at within those expectations, and what at within those expectations, and what the next step is, or the expectation, what does that clearly look like, so that students can understand moving themselves and engaging themselves forward along with their teachers in their courses, their, their chosen course subject area?
Through the chair, what I would also add on to what Superintendent Turner has offered is, if a student is not demonstrating their knowledge through the provided layout of assessment that the teacher has put out, that is a reality in reporting. So if there is not evidence of the student being able to demonstrate knowledge or skills linked to the assessed outcomes, that is reflected in the grade. And I think it's important to highlight that on both ends, clarity for all students, that allows them to understand excellence, and what that needs to look like, as opposed to simply a sum of all the parts, and also addresses when a student is not achieving and not meeting those requirements as laid out. And the other element too is, it's separate from missing one test as the question, but rather the knowledge of that set of outcomes, that's really important to be able to ensure a student is demonstrating that. So I would say it increases the clarity of those grades at the end most significantly.
Thank you. Trustee Bukedinovich?
So through that, it sounds, what I'm hearing is that there are crystal-clear expectations for students that's not being lost through outcomes-based assessment. And again, going back to the presentation, what landed with me is, it's more of a process of communication rather than as a currency. That was a phrase that landed with me. What I, was wondering though about though, is, is outcomes-based assessment manageable regardless of the number of students in a class? Because what I heard sounded, I mean, it sounds amazing, but with the number of students that grow, and just, I just think of me personally, as a mother of three children, I was looking at that information on Power School that I could look at as a parent, and which I glanced at, but I don't look at it in that detail with three children. I feel like, as I've had more children, I can't focus on, on, as a parent, doing that parenting piece and, and asking my children how they're doing with, with each outcome. So on the other end, with classrooms full of children, does this, does this process work? Is it manageable regardless of the number of students in a class, and if so, how?
Through the chair. Thank you. And so outcomes-based assessment is something teachers have always been expected to do. And this is true regardless of the number of students in the class, the grade, or the subject area. Teachers have always been expected to assess based on outcomes against the program of studies. And so this is something that we are supporting our teachers with. Outcomes-based assessment encourages a mix of a variety of different ways in which to gather that information about how students are doing against the program of studies. And so this includes observation, conversation, product-based assessment, and it allows teachers more tools and opportunities to assess learning in real time than would a static or standalone test or assessment would provide. And so OBA helps teachers collect meaningful information along the way against the program of studies, and it's something that they already, whether we're using outbase comes assessment or not, this is a practice and an expectation of teachers. And so this is providing additional tools in a fair, transparent, and equitable way across all of our CBE schools to allow all of our learners to have the best outcomes possible. Thank you.
Trustee Bukedinovich?
So we heard in the presentation that it's being rolled out now. If I understood correctly, so it's, it's available for some grade ten classes this year, but not eleven and twelve. So because I don't have a student in grade ten, I'm not, maybe that's why I don't see this as much with my, with my own kids. But is there flexibility as it starts to roll out more? Will there be flexibility for teachers? Or are we all in on OBA at the CBE? So given that high school teachers are, we have amazing teachers, they're highly qualified professionals, can they choose whether outcomes-based assessments versus points-based or task-based assessments versus a combination of both are best suited to each particular class that they teach? Do we, do we provide, will we be, do we anticipate providing our teachers with flexibility on this?
Thank you. Through the chair, and so certainly agree, CBE is filled with highly qualified professionals, and we very much appreciate all of our educators. Prioritizing professional learning time and implementation support for OBA is grounded in equity and ensuring that there are high-quality learning opportunities for all students in CBE. And as a result, implementation is not optional. CBE is looking for a consistent approach across high schools to ensure that all students benefit from fair, transparent, and effective assessment practices. And although while we do have a long-term vision, as you, you refer to, and as been discussed, we are taking a responsive approach, considering feedback and available resources to ensure that this slow, thoughtful, and measured approach is both supportive for our students and providing them with the highest quality learning opportunities that they can access, but also providing our staff with high-quality professional learning and resources and support to ensure that they feel that they have the supports that they need in order to implement consistent assessment practices in their classroom, between their classrooms, and across our schools. Thank you.
Trustees, do we have any additional questions on the board development session? Trustee Close, go ahead.
I don't, I don't have a question, but I have a lot to digest, and with appreciation. Oh, my goodness. I learned a lot today, and I really, really appreciate that. And I'm excited about this transformational change that, that we are doing. I have two examples that really grabbed my heart, and then I want to talk about advocacy. I can remember touring a school, and it's an elementary school, and obviously, we see this kind of learning at elementary in an easy way. But the part that grabbed my heart was, was, it was a kindergarten student that was showing us the proficiency scale and showed us where she was at in that. And she said, and this is what it will look like when I develop the skills so that I can master this. There was a lack of shame in the learning that I really responded to. And, and then the other example I have from a high school example, Michelle, you know exactly which high school I'm talking about, is, is, and it was just a small, minor piece of a conversation, but it was about outbaked, outbased, out, what is, outcomes-based assessment. And it was talking about a student that was transitioning to another school. And it was setting them up for success, not in the, in the conversation of, of, here's all the things the student doesn't know, and this is what you have to work on. It was through the lens of, this is what this student does know. And I found that very compelling as far as from an equity piece, and also from a, like, we want every, each and every student to be successful. So, so as I was listening to today's presentation, and I really appreciated it, and I want to go back to the videos, and, and I do find it transformational, and it does resonate with me, I'm not an educator, but it does resonate with me from a, from an asset-based view, from a community development point of view, like, so I'm pretty excited. But the other, the other piece is, you know, you've had some questions from trustees around, can we do this? Is it possible? And so we have, as a board, talked about, from an advocacy lens, around funding, about the real costs of what program service delivery is. And I think this sets us up in a really great way to talk about the funding that we need in order to have more students be successful. So I really appreciated today's professional development session, and, and there's going to be a lot that I consider and think about. So thank you.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? Okay. Well, seeing none, I would really like to thank our fantastic education directors, Lori Cooper and Michelle Howell. Thank you for being here. And Superintendent Turner Nelson, I assume, had a hand in this. So thank you to our administration as well, and very informative and thorough, and lots to digest, as Trustee Close said. Thank you. Trustees, I'm contemplating if we take a quick recess now, or we do, oh, I see some nodding. Okay, so let's take a five-minute recess, and then we will come back and look at Results III Citizenship. So don't log out, just tune off. Five minutes. Thank you. All right. Welcome back, everyone. Five minutes flies. All right. Do we have all trustees? Back, I think.
I just haven't seen Marilyn yet, Patricia.
Okay. Yeah, she's had some internet challenges.
I am here, but my internet keeps kicking out about every three or four minutes. And so I'm trying to leave my camera off just to maybe help that out a little bit. I can get back in really fast, but it is just kind of kicking out probably at least 12 times since the start of the meeting, so.
Oh, dear. Okay.
I'll leave my camera off just to try and help that out.
I'll share, I'm doing the same, because my mind keeps freezing. So it helps if I don't have my camera on.
Okay, maybe there's no more video, and we'll be smooth sailing, but we'll see. All right. So next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of Results III Citizenship. At the March 4, 2025 Board Meeting, trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding the report. The report is now on the agenda for the board to consider whether the chief superintendent is making reasonable progress with the provisions of Results III Citizenship. The board has previously approved the reasonable interpretations and indicators of this results policy, which has set the stage for effective monitoring of actual organizational performance. I would like to remind trustees that today, our job is to determine whether or not the report provides sufficient evidence that the CBE has made reasonable progress toward achieving the result, and to build a portfolio of chief superintendent performance in the results half of the chief superintendent's job expectations. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Hack?
Thank you. My team of the Board of Trustees has reviewed the monitoring report for Results III Citizenship, and concludes that reasonable progress is being made toward the ultimate achievement of this results policy.
Thank you, Trustee Hack. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the monitoring report for Results III Citizenship, and concludes that reasonable progress is being made toward the ultimate achievement of this results policy. Trustee Hack, would you please open debate?
Lovely. I want to start off by saying that this, this morning's presentation on citizenship demonstrates real examples of what the data in this report tries to represent. This morning, we got to see school present, present that focused on the whole K to 12 progression of citizenship throughout the educational journey. And I love the idea that the Traveling Tuesdays promote, even with our youngest learners, engaging with the world around them. What was shown was throughout the years, they focus on meaningful and impactful student-led projects. When we as an organization find those things that are meaningful to students, they continue to engage in active citizenship throughout their lives. It drives purpose and connection, all of which we need more of in our lives. Citizenship is active participation in the communities. It is understanding rights, and more often, not the part that may be overlooked, is responsibility, responsibility to ourselves and others within the local, national, and global context. Citizenship is the understanding of others that we live with on this planet and the planet itself. It's about making good decisions with accurate information that has an impact on both the living and non-living clients that we surround ourselves with. Although citizenship was a minor focus in the 2023 CBE student survey, it doesn't diminish its continued focus throughout the year around our schools, and that's what we were seeing today. I'd like to note that this report only did cover div three student report card results related to three and five indicators, as the board suspended the K to six report card results for the 2023-24 school year. And strictly looking at this data, there should be caution used because it isn't comparing apples to apples over the years. Yet, between the student survey, the data, the presentation, as well as numerous school visits done over the last year, I do believe that CBE is making reasonable progress as it relates to our three citizenship. So I asked my fellow trustees to approve this report, supporting that reasonable progress is being made in this results policy.
Thank you very much. Are there any trustees that wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you, Trustee Hack. That was a great opening. And so I'm not going to repeat all the things that you said, but, but agree with every word that you did present. And it'll be easy to support a motion on, on demonstrating progress. But there's only two comments that I want to make, and, and again, they're from appreciation, and oh, my goodness, I loved, yes, loved the presentation this morning. And I do have to mention Traveling Tuesdays, too. I wrote it down, because it did grab my heart. But one of the things I really appreciated when we were reviewing the report is Superintendent Turner, when you described the, that some of the little results around environmental stewardship could be, because the students that are actually doing this focus weren't included in the survey. And I felt that that was really a powerful piece that we need to acknowledge, and it gave me some relief. And the other piece that gave me some relief is, over the years, you know, I have probably been a little disappointed that we talk too much about reuse, reuse, and recycle, and, and would prefer to have that conversation around resource management, or, or how we lead the earth, and, and how we respect the earth, and how we take agency there. I also heard, you know, commentary around that as, as far as the new science curriculum and the concepts of sustainability. So I have great hope for the future of the Results III on citizenship. It's an important one, and it's one that's critical. I believe that just as, it's a simple way to look at it, but it was profound this morning when we heard about respecting ourselves, respecting others, and respecting the earth, and, and having that active community piece, that connection. And as Trustee Hack has said, I think he said, purpose and connection. So it really resonated. So, so even to support, and thank you for the work that's being done in, in CBE schools.
Thank you, Trustee Close. Trustee Bukedinovich?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. In my debate, I wanted to note that 2025 marks two important milestones. The Calgary Board of Education was founded in 1885, so 2025 will mark the CBE's 140th birthday. And Fort Calgary was built in 1875 for the Northwest Mounted Police, so 2025 will also mark Calgary's 150th birthday. Now, over the past century and a half, the CBE has grown to become one of the leading school boards in the world, with our students ranking among the top in the world on international standardized tests. And in the intervening years, our city has also grown, and grown to become one of the world's most successful cities, and one of the most world, in one of the world's most successful countries. And this didn't happen by accident. It wasn't inevitable. It's this culture of accommodation that involved, that evolved in our country more than a century and a half ago, is a way for the French and English populations to exist, and which turned out to be ideally suited to creating a country whose citizens value being open-minded and forward-looking. These values, along with the values of grit, hard work, empathy, entrepreneurship, respect for the rule of law, and democracy, have served to weave a solid, solid safety net and strong economy, which in turn have attracted millions of people from all parts of the world to Canada, where we continue to work on how to best live, work, and play together in harmony. For the 142,000 students enrolled in our schools today, our focus on citizenship at the CBE means that we want our students to appreciate and protect our communities, our planet, our city, and our country. It's imperative that our students nurture a deep emotional attachment to Canada in our schools. Whether they can trace their Canadian roots to Time Memorial, or whether they moved to Canada just this year, I want each student in our schools to love our country and what it stands for. So I intend to vote in favor of this report, because I am confident that our schools are nurturing citizenship in our students, so they feel very proud to be Canadian, so they feel very proud of Calgary's 140 history of public education, and so they feel very proud of Calgary on the occasion of our city's 150th birthday.
Thank you, Trustee Bukedinovich. Any other trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Thank you, trustee Vukadinevich. Any other trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? All right, we'll move to second round of debate. Anyone wishing to enter second round?
I might just add in here that with talking about division three results, which we are, so junior high students, that in the Queen Elizabeth presentation, they focused a lot on those students being outdoor. And you're right, we usually often think of reduce, reuse, recycle as the environmental component, but the value of being outside and being responsible for one another and the land and working together, that was kind of a neat connection and just being respectful and kind. And that all of the students were supported, those with, you know, the GATE program or the deaf and hard of hearing and all the students within the school. So yeah, proud of these results.
Anyone else for second round? And if not, we'll ask trustee Hack to close. Okay, go ahead, trustee Hack.
Very great support for this. I will add nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll now call each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close.
In favor.
Thank you, trustee Dennis.
In favor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hack.
In favor.
Thank you, trustee May.
In favor.
Thank you, trustee Vukadinevich.
In favor.
Thank you, and I also vote in favor of the motion, so that is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is item 9.2, Three-Year School Capital Plan 2026 to 2029. Chief Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. And trustees, I know that this report has been one you've all been waiting for. And it's an important next step for our organization in presenting the three-year school capital plan. To provide context, every year, Alberta Education requires school jurisdictions to assess the need for modernizations to existing schools and the construction of new schools and submit a combined priority list by April 1st. While it is a three-year plan, every year it is updated and changed. For the first time, this year's proposed plan incorporates the newly created existing school criteria that indeed replaces the old modernization criteria. You will recall that the new existing school criteria was developed at your request, and this revised criteria was approved by you last October and now greatly expands the variety of capital requests the CBE can make for existing schools. Sorry, can make for existing schools and requests that can now include additions to a school, the revitalization or modernization of a school, or even the replacement of a school. The prioritization of projects using the approved Board of Trustees' capital planning prioritization criteria helps ensure that the prioritization process is objective and reproducible. And the plan before you today represents this year's proposed submission based on these criteria. This is indeed a holistic plan, a responsive plan. And for more information, I'm going to ask Superintendent Breton to provide further background prior to opening it up to questions.
Thank you, Chair Bolger and trustees. The plan before you has been updated to reflect the government of Alberta's new school announcements made just last Friday. In keeping with the government's commitment to approving up to 30 new schools per year under the School Construction Accelerator Program, the province announced 10 new schools for the CBE on March 14, bringing the total of new schools that have received various levels of capital approvals to 15. And while 15 new schools does move the yardstick, it must be taken within a context of student enrollment within the CBE having grown by the equivalent of approximately 30 new schools over the past three school years, therefore highlighting the importance of continued approvals over the coming years to fully address past record enrollment and continued strong future enrollment growth projections. Accordingly, the proposal before you brings another 16 new school requests forward for consideration, with 11 of these situated in year one owing to how they are either immediately site-ready or will become site-ready within this calendar year. And in keeping with Chief Pittman's comments regarding how this year's plan incorporates the use of the new existing school criteria that was created at your direction, coupled with how the CBE 10-year student accommodation and facility strategy identifies capacity at the high school level as being amongst the highest areas of concern, you will also note on this plan our very first request for an addition to an existing school, that being for John Cardinal Schubert High School, with the intent of allowing more students attend school closer to home. Notwithstanding the recent government approval of the Cornerstone High School and the request for a modest addition to John Cardinal Schubert High School, space for students at high school remains an area of concern. In fact, if the three high school sites identified in year two were site-ready today, two of these would place near the top of the CBE year one priorities. The need for these sites to be made ready as soon as possible is further underscored by how high schools owing to their larger size and student capacity typically take four years to open after the government announces their approval. With student enrollment remaining strong and CBE's high schools already currently operating on average at 108% utilization rate, the immediate need for additional high school capacity cannot be underscored enough. On that note, and having conveyed these highlights of the three-year school capital plan, we would be pleased to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Superintendent Breton. Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bolger. I want to dive right into the high school sites and site readiness and your comment that if West MacLeod High School in Belmont was actually site-ready, it would likely be a priority three in year one. We've I've got a collection of questions that I might ask. I know, like all of us, are keen on this area and trying to advance it. But I'll bucket them and then see what happens, Superintendent, with your response. So how are high school sites set aside, determined, and why is this site not ready? And can you comment on the results of discussions that admin has had with City of Calgary administration about site readiness and about securing high school sites? And what is the challenge that we're trying to address? And is there an opportunity to accelerate high school readiness so that we can appropriately leverage the government's interest in accelerating the construction of new schools because this is an urgent request? And this is probably ancillary, but my mind has already gone to if Belmont is a challenge, if the West MacLeod site is a challenge, do we have to look at other sites and contribute to the timeliness that we need to create a high school in the South?
Through the chair. So high school sites are identified within the city's regional policy plans. So these are high-level plans, and they establish broad land use patterns. Look at sequencing of development of the city, key transportation networks. Environmental considerations are part of that as well. They're typically planned for areas that would see area, a population of around 60,000 to 70,000 citizens. And generally, as past planning practice, CBE has been allocated one high school site for each regional policy plan. So now, once a site is identified, how do we get to that point where a site is made ready, I think, is another question you ask. So site readiness is largely dependent on the local developer's phasing plan. So the city will enter into a development agreement with a developer for a community. So the city selects a developer, says you can develop this area. An agreement is made. The developer creates a phasing plan, and that phasing plan, of course, the entire community can't be built out all at once. So the phasing plan is influenced by what the developer has as far as a vision for that community, how the site, how the community will be serviced in terms of water, sanitary, storm sewers, market absorption, so how quickly lots are selling or they foresee that they will sell. Financing, how easy or more difficult it might be for them to secure financing. So there's a number of considerations. And of course, as they're doing this work, a school site can be a very convenient area to also be stockpiling materials for the construction of the community that is required to ultimately then be attending that school, including things like lawn or essentially the dirt that's scraped off the top of the properties. So the future West MacLeod High School site that is in the future Belmont community is situated within a later phase of development within that community. It hasn't yet been subdivided or developed to date. And so for a site to be ready amongst some of the criteria we need, certainly very important up there are roads to access the site, electricity, utilities, right sewer, water, natural gas, so on and so forth. As far as challenges that we are having and how we could leverage what is currently happening in terms of the priorities that are being expressed for the need for school sites. So meetings between the city and the CBE are certainly frequent and ongoing on this matter specifically and on student accommodation issues, generally speaking. There is also separate CBE discussions with developers, either individually or also via Build or the Building Industry and Land Development Association that occurs on an ongoing basis. Those discussions have the purpose of helping developers understand how their actions or lack thereof can influence site readiness. And for us also then to better understand from a developer perspective, what they see as barriers to site readiness. Certainly, there are, these discussions continue to be occurring. And more recently, we are now in a place where the city has taken the lead in organizing discussions between the CBE developers and, of course, the city to continue those discussions. So if there was a silver bullet or an easy answer to this, it would have already been implemented. And so that's why now we're starting to see the discussion broaden to start bringing multiple people together to discuss. Now, part of the challenge in terms of getting the sites ready, I talked about the phasing of those sites. And for a developer, one must also recognize that once they make a school site ready, it does trigger the need for them to be paying site levies. Also, of course, there is a financial cost for them to be actually making that site ready, bringing all the services, bringing the roads to that site, grading it. And in addition, once they've done that, then there are site levies that they have to now provide for that entire community. And so that is also certainly a consideration from their perspective in the sense that they have already invested a lot of money developing that community, and they're probably looking to try to recoup some of those capital investments through the sale of homes before they are investing in a school site that will cost them and will then also trigger the need to pay site levies. Another aspect that is a challenge and maybe that I would highlight is the way that high school sites have traditionally been secured on behalf of public school boards within the city of Calgary. So whereas the entire school site for an elementary or middle school is secured through the taking of reserves that is allowed under the Municipal Government Act by the municipality, so the city of Calgary. Past practice within the city of Calgary has been for the municipality to secure 50% of a high school site, given the fact that it's larger, using the taking of reserves and the other 50% through a purchase. And this purchase is funded through a joint-use reserve fund. And this joint-use reserve fund is replenished through the sale of municipal and school reserve sites and other reserve sites. It can also be replenished through the taking of cash in lieu from a developer. So instead of taking land as part of a development, there might be a request for cash, and that would then allow for that reserve fund to be replenished. We've been seeing, as a result of, of course, the dramatic growth, a steady reduction in that reserve fund. And I should underscore as well, of course, this reserve fund is also used in that same approach of 50% reserved lands and 50% cash. That same approach is also used by the city for the taking of lands for recreational facilities as well. And so, you know, schools are not the only draw on this. Just definitely need to underscore that. So I think that gives a little bit of a high level over most of your questions. I think I'll leave it at that. And if there's something I missed, please let me know.
Thank you, Superintendent Breton. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I think you've probably answered this question. There's a lot of great information there, Superintendent Breton. So thank you so much and just helping to build just a lot of understanding around the complexity of actually securing high school sites. So appreciate that a lot. I'm just going to bring up three different sites, the North Regional, Belvedere, and Providence. Are we, you know, those are indicated in the capital plan on map four. But I'm just kind of wondering, the same issues with those sites, right? And are we, is it the same story as what, you know, what you explained to us with the other sites?
Through the chair, most definitely the way that those sites would be acquired and the challenges that are posed from a developer perspective in terms of prioritizing site readiness are the same. Now, specifically for the three sites you've just mentioned, we've got some additional, they're further behind in terms of their progress for potential development. So I look at specifically North Regional. There's currently no area structure plan in place for these lands. And so as a result of that, seeing as the city has not yet developed that, then we have no known timeline in terms of how long we might be seeing a site be serviced and become ready. For the Belvedere site, there is an area structure plan in place, and the developer has submitted outline plan applications. So that is certainly positive, but still indicates that site readiness is probably five years or more out. And then on the Providence side of the equation, the outline plan application has been submitted, and this one is further along still, but we're still looking at approximately a five-year timeframe before we might see site readiness. So a little bit earlier than Belvedere. Now, these school sites are probably, all three of them, a good five to six years out before they need to be situated on the three-year school capital plan. So that does give us some time. And then, you know, certainly explains the current focus being on the West MacLeod, Glacier Ridge, and Livingston High School sites that you currently see in the plan.
Chief Pittman, do you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, and this is in no way intended to stop any other questions around high school sites. I just want to, but I think what I really want to underscore of all of the detailed response that Superintendent Breton has provided with respect and specific to high school sites. We have, this is more than simply a CBE issue, and it is one that is requiring significant and constant follow-up. together with city administration. And there's another uh changing landscape within the Municipal Government Act and all of those pieces influencing uh the work moving forward. So our commitment of the things that we control is ensuring that the information that we have and the needs we have is provided in a timely fashion to every key player in this process, from provincial, municipal, developer. And that we are also seeking to make sure that we have a full understanding of wherein we may need to make adjustments so that we can achieve the goal of getting these high school sites ready and them built. That is top priority. So feel free to ask other more detailed questions, but I think at a really high level, it underscores the level of collaboration and the complexity uh that relates to both the acquisition of high school sites. And by that, I mean, they may be designated to us, but the actual purchase of the full site is a significant decision in and of itself, as is the continued move towards making it site-ready. And we're highly motivated in the context of the School Construction Accelerator Program to get this moving.
Thank you very much. Trustee May?
Thank you. I'll keep on the same um uh thread. So A with map four existing and future high school sites and also table seven, which shows the K to twelve actual projected utilization rates. Um, I feel like I ask this question every year, but do we have any sites that we could even obtain in the southeast? Because um the numbers keep rising. And so right now I see that we're asking for an addition for a six hundred student addition at John Cardinal. But the southeast sector utilization by residents is two hundred and eighty-nine percent and projected to be three hundred and thirty-six percent in four years. So I'm wondering, do we have any sites that are upcoming with an AFP that are just not on this list? Because they're upcoming, um, and then I'm wondering, do we expect Range View Catholic School opening to take some of the pressure off? And and for how long, this might be more of a system planning, but for how long can Lord Beaverbrook take students from the south and for how long can Centennial take overflow to the south? Because I just, every year the number seems to get bigger and so I'm just wondering if there's been any movement there.
Through the chair, I'll I'll try to ensure I touch on all the questions, but please let me know if I do miss one. Um, in terms of additional high school sites in the southeast planning sector, um, currently, there is only, uh, there are no other sites than than what we currently have identified. Um, and the reason for that is that large portions of the southeast planning sector are zoned for industrial land use. And so obviously typically within an industrial area, we would not have a a school site. Uh, that being said, as part of the East Regional Context Study, and so this is uh lands that are east of Mahogany and Range View that are currently undeveloped. Um, currently about, I think, three thousand acres in size. Uh, that sector would potentially have around seventy-five thousand people. Um, the city of Calgary would be, as they get further along that work, identifying additional high school sites. So that will then open the door for us to um to be better able to uh serve students in that area. Um, from a uh Lord Beaverbrook and Centennial perspective, um, what we're seeing with Lord Beaverbrook is actually a um the ability, it will, it will be a very full school, um, but our ability to continue for the long term to accommodate southeast students that are designated to Lord Beaverbrook. And so um that is uh, that is, is a positive uh area. Um, Centennial uh will pose some additional uh longer-term challenges. Uh, we believe that we'll be able to continue to accommodate students at that school until probably the summer of twenty twenty-eight. Um, subsequent to that, there might be a short-term need to uh look at modulators to be able to continue to to accommodate until such time as the two nearby high school sites. Site-ready and being developed and then seeing that uh student population for Centennial uh be um be addressed or the pressures at that school being addressed. So I I hope I touched on all your questions.
Can I follow up, Chair Bolger?
Yes.
So but within, so I'm glad that you talked about the East Regional Context Study. But so when I'm I'm hearing that, my, I'm assuming that's like twenty years out, right? Because like by the time those come up and even can make our list, like I'm like, this is not like a, we're going to look at in the next ten years, right? Like that's a a long-term addition, like additional high school spot, right? It's not immediate by any stretch.
Through the chair, most definitely it is a very long-term um uh sort of of look to what we will have to be able to accommodate students. And that suddenly made me think that part of your comment did speak to the Range View um Catholic High School site and I didn't speak to that. And certainly we don't plan for um other school board schools um taking students uh away from the Calgary Board of Education, especially given the fact that, of course, Catholic education is a, is one where um there is a a need to be um entitled for that under legislation. Uh, but that being said, certainly we consistently see whenever a school, a new school opens within a community, um, that parents will be taking decisions to help minimize the transportation time of their students and attend the closest school. And so we most definitely anticipate that should uh that high school or when that high school opens, uh that at that point in time, we would see a reduction in some of the pressure in some of our other schools.
Thank you.
Trustee Close, go ahead.
I'm I'm not sure that this question can be answered, but it's my understanding that the the way Calgary allocates high school sites is not necessarily consistent across the province. Is that correct? Do we know? Can you answer?
Through the chair, um, certainly different municipalities have different approaches and 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 much of that would be informed by um historical um uh sort of best approaches that they would have developed for themselves. Um, but uh, you know, under the MGA, there is the ability for those lands, those ten percent of taking of reserves to be entirely dedicated. Um, and I believe that is the practice, for example, with the city of Edmonton uh vis-à-vis um high schools. Um, and again, other communities across the province may have again very different approaches depending on their local circumstances.
Thank you. And Chair Bolger, if I could just uh follow up with a comment. You know, our chief superintendent talked about collaboration and complexity and and I think we have to underscore that a million times over of uh how critical this conversation is. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee May?
Thank you, and I think this might be my last high school question. So um, but it's in regarding table eleven, um, page nine of thirty-two, the new um school addition project score. So this, like you mentioned at the beginning, is the first time we're seeing this. It's a new criteria that we approved. Um, I'm sure John Cardinal Schuber will be very happy to, if they get um a six hundred uh up to six hundred school addition. I think it's fantastic and could definitely help them out. Um, I'm just wondering if you could explain kind of how um schools ended up on here and if there was any other ranking criterias? And I'm just thinking off my head of Centennial, because you just mentioned in the last comment there that um, we can only kind of manage the short term till twenty twenty-eight, which is three years away. And so um I'm wondering, you know, are there other additions that we could push through more quickly? And so that they could help kind of while we're waiting for these bigger sites to go, because it's a smaller um capacity and a smaller ask.
Through the chair, um, what you're seeing at table eleven is a reflection of the newness of your criteria. So uh, we, of course, were faced with a huge challenge um from a late October approval of the revised criteria to the development of the plan that you have before you. Um, and so the focus, as you see in the report, is really on year one. Um, and that is intentional because we know that is where the government will be looking when they're making approvals in a year from now, when they're reviewing this document. In a year from now, when you do see the next three years, three-year school capital plan, you will see that table eleven, that equivalent, completely fleshed out. Um, we, through our professional um experience and knowledge of the schools, uh, recognize that John Cardinal Schubert had the greatest challenges going for it. And that is why this one uh was ran and and scored and ultimately positioned. Um, the other high schools, that work will be done over the course of the year and certainly will help inform the future plan. Recognizing though, again, that a school like Centennial does have two pressure release valves uh that I was referencing earlier in terms of other high school sites that will help reduce the long-term pressure. And so in in a circumstance like a Centennial, a permanent addition might not be in the best interests and it might be more modular classrooms that can then be moved elsewhere. Um, once again, those other um high schools end up opening in the longer term.
Thank you. Trustee Hack?
Thank you so much. Um, so I have a question. It's uh nine dash eighty-six on page seventy-five of our report. Some referencing the table there, but some about busing and travel time. I was doing a quick, um, I guess back and forth to what changed in this report compared to our last year's report. And I'm just wondering if you can explain a little bit of the difference. And I know there is a slight difference in mathematical terms. I see average travel time in minutes is now calculated where we used to have the median travel time and the direct average distance traveled, number kilometers, and the direct distance traveled in our kilometers. Just wondering if administration can speak a little bit to what that change means, um, and then any standardization that can be going forward? Because I do see that there is significant changes in time or distance traveled when we're looking at average and median and direct average and then direct travel times.
Through the chair, um, so the question is in regards to the change of uh use of the median travel time versus aver- average travel time. Now, I think that's the first part of the question. And the second one in terms of the direct average distance traveled uh versus, and if you could just say what was the the previous?
It was, sorry, it was direct distance traveled. I'm just wondering if there was a change there and what some of those number changes would mean if we were looking between the two at once.
Right. And so unfortunately, this is not something I'd have at the tips of my finger. I believe it might just be a question of um correcting the language or trying to be a little bit more uh specific on this document. Uh, but I, if it certainly, if it is the will of the board, I can go back and confirm uh why the change from median to average. And if there was any change on the direct distance, if, or, you know, my anticipation is it's always been an average distance in the past. Uh, but I don't have any more uh information on that, unfortunately.
Trustee Close?
Thank you. Um, I believe you have answered this uh question, but I just want to confirm from a Dr. E.P. Scarlet point of view uh around our modernizations or change in criteria, the work that you're going to do over the course of the next year. Um, because of course, this is a high school that um is feeling a pinch of 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 the crowded hallways to begin with, uh, because we don't have the high school in the south yet. Um, and I'm hoping that modulators will be um uh added to that. But can you comment on how we, how we uh, I guess, confirm about how we would be maximizing space at Scarlet through that uh review that you're doing?
Through the chair, um, so for Dr. E.P. Scarlet in a proactive way, um, you will recall that during the high school engagement process, the Spanish bilingual program at the school was consolidated at present heights. And so that helped create space uh to start with. And then fast forward to today, uh renovations are currently underway to transform the spaces within Dr. E.P. Scarlet into more usable and teachable space. And we anticipate that will create an additional one hundred and thirty student spaces. So that will be a welcome um improvement there. Then, um, if we actually now rewind back to October of twenty twenty-four, uh, the modular classroom program that you referenced, uh, trustee Close, uh, and that you approved, that the board approved last October, it requests a um, it's six modulators, so approximately a hundred and fifty additional spaces. And it's been, it was identified as the second priority within our request. And so feeling highly confident based on the government's um uh prioritization uh of addressing student accommodation enrollment issues, uh, that this is an area that we should be seeing an approval from the government. Um, and then, of course, from a longer-term perspective, uh, there's a continuing review of all of our schools. And those schools that deserve and warrant to be monitored are captured within the three-year school um or student uh system student accommodation plan. And you will be seeing that document coming to you in June. And most certainly, Dr. E.P. Scarlet is identified within that document and is a reflection of the continuing work that we do to monitor, assess and be ready to um uh accept or um accommodate the students for that school.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, I had a few questions on modulators, but I think I'm getting the gist of uh some of the decision-making there based on some of the other questions here. Um, so I'll pass on a couple of them, but I am curious about, um, you know, in the new school requests, we have a number of schools that are um being suggested to be opened with modulars or adding them and some it looks like to add some, adding them later. I'm just wondering, um, not knowing when these projects would be announced and then, of course, funded or even built, um, how did admin determine which schools would include modulators now or versus later? And also just curious about the consistency of a hundred and fifty. Um, because I know when we ask for modulators now, we don't typically ask for consistent amounts and it depends on the site and, you know, whether it can accommodate modulators and that sort of thing. So just curious about the hundred and fifty.
Through the chair, um, so what you are seeing within the three-year school capital plan in terms of that modular column uh for the immediate opening capacity or a future potential uh growth is new to the the plan this year. It's something that has been requested of Alberta Education. Um, and I think it's a very positive um uh signal in the sense that when the province is building a school uh for an immediate opening of a certain size, let's say six hundred students, but with recognition that it may grow to, let's say, seven hundred and fifty for adding another hundred and fifty modulators. Um, already, the size of the gymnasium, any career and technology foundation or studies areas, corridors, exits would be designed to accommodate that potential larger future uh population. And so um I just wanted to 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 speak to that a little bit, just to highlight where I, where I think it'll give us um even more flexibility with our schools going forward. Now, why do some show an immediate need for um modulators whereas others don't but might have it for later on? Um, it's really all around what stage the the community is at in terms of development, what we are actually seeing in terms of the numbers of students being generated by that community and what we project will be generated um in terms of students from that community into the future. And so in some cases, uh, we might see our projections saying that the initial core capacity will suffice and for the the number of students. And so a core school of that size would be the logical um investment. Uh, but that that community will continue to see growth and then modulators would be required. And later on, if ever the community uh does mature a bit and reduce, well, then those modulators can be removed and we're back to that original core opening. Uh, whereas some others, uh, we are seeing immediately an incredible number of students that an incredible number of students that demand more modulators immediately, knowing that they might have already gone through that initial ramp up. And later on, now we might be needing to remove those modulators and being able to allocate them to other schools in new and developing communities at that time. So it's really a little bit of a timing in terms of where the community is, what they're generating in terms of numbers of students. I'm sorry, I think there was one last piece and it was the one hundred and fifty sort of standard size. And so that is a sort of like a standard block, if you want, of modular classrooms. It's, it is certainly possible for us to do different variations. And you've seen that through and through across the Calgary Board of Education. But a sort of a six-pack of modulators is a very neat number. And it's a very effective and efficient way to be placing them. And that later on, if those need to be moved, ideally as a block, will help reduce the overall costs.
Thank you for that. Super, I mean, trustee Vukadinovich.
Thank you, Chair. One of our year one priorities last year was a major modernization of Crescent Heights High School. And I know that in order to manage our assets responsibly, it's incredibly important that the provincial government, sorry, approved it.
Perhaps trustee Vukadinovich will give you a minute and go to trustee May, so you can regroup. Go ahead, trustee May.
Thank you. I'm scared to drink water now. So on page nine of fifteen, it goes over background and how the, and it gives an overview of how the government's capital planning prioritization process works. And so my question is specifically for phase two. And so in that, it states that provincial staff may meet with dual jurisdictions to obtain further information is required. So I'm wondering, how often does this phase happen with the CBE? And did this conversation occur with the last capital plan? And then I'll have a follow-up, if that's okay.
Through the chair. Yes, those discussions happen very regularly between Alberta Education and the Calgary Board of Education. They occur throughout the year. They're typically all project-specific discussions, but maybe more than one project or one school site might be discussed during a specific meeting. During that time, oftentimes, what we find is that there is a heavy focus from Alberta Education on our projections within that area where that school would be serving. And in comparison with whatever projections they might have. And in fact, if you look at the Cornerstone High School and the Redstone Elementary School, those discussions certainly were, occurred before the most recent announcements and approvals we received back in February, so just last month, and helped inform ultimately the larger sizes that have been approved.
And can I have a follow-up, Chair Boulter? Thank you. So I'm asking because in this last round of capital funding announcements, Walden was the only school in year one that was not given to the CBE, which resulted in Calgary not receiving any schools in the south quadrant for CBE. And so I'm wondering if there were any concerns with that site? Any possible insights into why that decision was made? And anything that would just help that community to advocate for that school to be prioritized in this next build?
Through the chair. I'll just point out that last Friday, and again, and all the information is really quite recent, but Mahogany Middle School did receive design funding as it was priority number three in our last year's plan. And so it is identified within the plan now as being an approved site in the southeast, an approved school in the southeast. And certainly, the middle school zone was a very high-pressure point for the southeast. So this will be well-received once it actually opens up. As far as the Walden site, no, there aren't any issues or concerns with the site. And here, this is completely conjecture. What I did hear last Friday is that Calgary Catholic is receiving a school in the Walden site. And so as the province is, you know, making those determinations province-wide, there may be some method to their madness in terms of determining that at this point in time, they needed to be spreading some of the wealth in terms of school sites in other areas of the city, in other areas of the province, and maybe not have two elementary schools being approved at the same time for that community. But again, completely conjecture.
Thank you, Superintendent Breton. Trustee Vukadinovich is not going to comment right now, so trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. So we have been, and we're seeing it in this plan too, where we're looking to request schools with larger capacity. And so I'm looking at, you know, considering communities. I mean, if anyone has taken a drive through any of the newer communities, you're seeing many multifamily dwellings being built, whether it be condos or apartment buildings, that sort of thing. And also, you know, the city's goal to increase density, you know, always, you know, looking at more secondary suites being approved, that sort of thing. And so I'm just kind of curious around, I guess, parking at our schools, right? So larger schools is going to mean more staff to accommodate larger student numbers. In communities where street parking is becoming quite limited, wondering how we determine, I guess, the number of parking spaces? We actually may need to accommodate all of the staff and a few guests into our schools. You know, trying to then leave that space open for, you know, residents being able to park, you know, in front of their homes or space for drop-off and pickup for parents that may be, that may be driving their kids to school. So I'm just kind of curious about that because I'm seeing future congestion, I guess, in some of these neighborhoods.
Through the chair. Of course, it is Alberta Education and Alberta Infrastructure that hold the standards to school sites. And there is some ability for influence on that. By and large, it is, it is the province that designs and ultimately delivers on the schools. Of course, the design will be influenced by local community bylaws or municipal bylaws. And so that having been said, the amount of parking spaces is influenced by the Alberta Education Design Guidelines, but ultimately, it's determined by the city as part of the development permit stage. And surrounding land use, road patterns, school capacity, street parking, these are all things that are taken into consideration when they're looking at things like the traffic impact assessment and, of course, parking. And then ultimately, the city will approve the development permit once the design that is brought to them by Alberta Infrastructure meets the requirements that the city has laid out. And so most certainly, the province and Alberta Infrastructure, the delivery agency recognizes the larger number of students, larger number of staff, means need for greater parking. But it will typically really depend and pivot on what the city sees in that area and requires the province to incorporate within their design.
Thank you. Trustee Close, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Moving to what's inside of some of our buildings. I was looking at page nine twenty-three or page twelve about the self-contained special education programs such as ACCESS or A L P. When I was looking at that chart, you know, there's a five-year history of enrollment. It looks like special education classes. It's not quite flatlining, but they seem level. They're not increasing as much as you would expect. So I'm wondering how is this need in programming considered when ranking the need for new learning spaces?
Through the chair. The need for specialized programming is not part of the board-approved capital ranking criteria. So it doesn't influence the score of a school. But I think that is appropriate in the sense that the number and the location of these classes does change from year to year, just as the number and location of the students that require those classes also changes from year to year. And so the placement of these specialized education classes, there's a manual process that reviews this, looks at trying to minimize travel time, best placement to be as close as possible to their residents, and continue to evolve as students are evolving academically through grades one through twelve and might be moving from elementary to middle to high school.
Thank you. Trustee May.
I think I'll continue with trustee Close's line of questioning about our population. In the report, it says our projected enrollment by 2029 is over one hundred and fifty-nine thousand students, which is, I was kind of shocked to see the number. I'm just wondering, with the federal changes to immigration and rules, do we expect to still see this level of growth? Are we kind of continually having to kind of look through the data that we've been provided by the city to forecast our growth?
Through the chair. Certainly, anything that is a projection has to be continuously reevaluated and reassessed because it is a projection and then reality happens. That being said, when this projection was created, we had already anticipated that the current levels of immigration and specifically of enrollment within the CBE would be changing by this year. And so when we heard the announcement from the federal government of changes to the immigration targets that actually aligned perfectly with what we had concluded when we had originally come to that one hundred and fifty-nine thousand estimate. So at this time, it is still a number that we believe is a possibility. And obviously, though, needs to continue to be monitored to see if it'll actually end up being a little lower, a little higher.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much. I'm going to move on to information contained on pages six and seven of nine, and in particular, around the use of capital reserves and how we access those funds to support the fit-up of new schools and also toward modernizations. At one point, I understood that capital reserves could be used, so the additional investments that CBE made into schools alongside of Alberta Infrastructure and their investment were for things like air conditioning or wireless infrastructure, that sort of thing. So I'm just wondering if, you know, could you provide just a few more examples in terms of, you know, what we also might purchase beyond what is provided through the school build and the fit-up that the province does? You know, what additional investments specifically do we make to meet the expectations of Calgary families for their students? And also, we know that capital reserves are limited. And once they are spent, that money is gone. And we may not, you know, have sort of that same ability to be able to put money back into capital reserves for future use. So I'm wondering, you know, with this many, we have a lot of schools coming, which is really exciting, but is also going to meet some, mean some significant investment. So what are we investing that money in when we pull it out of capital reserves to support the mods and the new schools? But also, what are we considering moving forward when we may be looking at a depleting degree of capital reserves, a more challenging ability to be able to replenish those? Yet, there's still the needs within these schools.
Through the chair. I'll provide some examples of potential areas where the capital reserves help enhance the opening day experience of students and, of course, their subsequent learning experience within those schools. And then I'll hand it over to superintendent Grundy to discuss the capital reserve itself and the replenishment thereof, if you want. So some specific examples, certainly, you named a few, trustee Dennis, in terms of building cooling and the wireless access points within schools. So those devices actually needing to be funded by the school board, not covered as part of the construction grant. Other things would include window blinds. So there are no exterior window blinds covered within the construction. And so those are included. The province, the provincial grant only covers door and side light shades. Public address systems. Conduits are part of the project. But again, the devices at either end, those are responsibility of the school board. Musical instruments. A folding gym stage that can fold up into the wall so that events can be held within the gymnasium. Of course, we also have the time for the principal and some of their key staff to actually set up the school. So if you can imagine opening a school on the very first day and having to open up the boxes to put the books on the shelves and then unwrap the computer from all of its packaging and try to turn it on for the first time. And so there is funding there for the principal to come in several months beforehand with some key staff again to help set things up. And then certainly, IT devices, generally speaking. I just talked about computers, whether they're handheld devices or, you know, desktop devices. Those are all the responsibility of the school board. And now with that, superintendent Grundy, over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Breton and through the chair. So if I understand the question correctly, number one, capital reserves for the CBE are currently fairly healthy. Although I do agree, we have a number of new schools coming our way and it will be incumbent upon us to make sure that we plan carefully between now and when the school's open to make sure that we deploy those capital reserves as appropriately as possible. I think the first thing to look at is what we do fund in terms of commissioning or fit-up costs for new schools. Given the volume, we may need to scale back our aspirations a little bit to make sure that it all fits. So that's one option. Number two, there is the ability to take money out of CBE's operating budget and transfer it into capital reserves if we need to augment it that way. We can also, with approval, move operating reserves, if we have access to them, into capital reserves. And another option is to enter into conversations with Alberta Education. I don't believe that the items that we include in our commissioning or fit-up are exotic or unusual. And so between now and then, we have the opportunity to explore how we can make sure that those schools are ready for teaching and learning on day one, given all of the resources we have available to us. So I think it's a little bit of all those things. And with a little bit of good fortune, I think we'll be able to land that plane. Thank you.
Thank you both. Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you. Back to page nine twenty-three, page twelve, and this time around alternative programs and the ability to provide choice. And I think we are challenged because of our learning spaces with that impact, as outlined actually in a summary that's later on. But just to comment, like, and I have one question. Under CBE student enrollment, it's shared that the alternative programs with the highest enrollment, of course, French immersion at nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five students, our traditional learning center at seven thousand eighty-nine students, and Spanish bilingual, three thousand seven hundred and forty-two. And I'm assuming, I could be wrong, that our science programs are next in line. It's also mentioned that enrollment in programs of choice is a total of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-eight and an increase of five hundred and seventy-three students, which is good news. But how many students, families are not able to get their first choice of program? I mean, are we meeting the demand per choice? I mean, are we meeting the demand per choice?
Through the chair. In terms of the question, I'll just maybe put a little adjustment to it based on the fact that on the form, when families express an interest in an alternative or language program, the form doesn't specify first, second, or third choice. It has a place, though, to indicate three choices, and those are numbered one, two, and three. And so there might be some who are thinking that number one is their number one choice, but we don't track it that way. We just see these are their three choices. And so when we look at that and we look at the information for the coming school year, what we see is that approximately 50% of families requesting an alternative program were not offered one of their three choices. And so in terms of meeting the demand for choice, certainly, it it is not there for at 50%. Recognizing, of course, though, that under the Education Act, schools are mandated to provide the regular program. And then there's a provision that says where space and resources allow, then alternative program programming can be provided. And of course, this is where our focus most definitely is during these years of record enrollment, is trying to provide those learning spaces for students just simply wishing to attend their regular program community school.
Thank you, trustee May.
Thank you. I think this is probably my last question. But on the table that has the new school and existing school capital class combined, can you explain why some projects are being requested as construction funding and some as planning funding? I'm just wondering, is this based on site readiness or size or there are other factors that would have them ranked or crittered that way?
Through the chair. My response to that will be a little bit different based on the type of project request. And specifically, if it is an existing school request, the reason we always put down planning first, now that those stages exist, is that in previous years, we're not funded. We don't have the 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 staff or the resources to be able to do the scoping and proper estimation of the work ahead of us. And so we would put in a proposal for a modernization. We might later on find out when actual planning work gets underway that, oh, my goodness, the cost is way off, and we're not going to be able to do what needs to be done in that school. And now it creates a whole bunch more work. And so for existing school projects, the idea here is to secure the planning funding, conduct the scope definition and project costing, and then in the subsequent year, be able to put in a full, a better developed request that actually has a estimate that we have a higher degree of confidence in. Now, when it comes to new schools, you hit the answer bang on. Those are really an indication of schools that currently don't have the site being ready. However, we could start work immediately, knowing that imminently that site will be ready and that by the time the planning work is is concluded, then we'll be able to move to design and and then flow through to construction without holding things up and not placing it on year one until two or three years down the road, and then having to start to do all of that work at that time and then even further delaying the project.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much, Chair. Only a few more questions from me. Looking at the table three and also map one, where we're looking at Saddle Ridge Middle School and also Annie Gale. So we know that Saddle Ridge Middle School was advanced to planning on March 1st of 2024, so just about a just about a year ago. And just wondering, with the accelerator program, when might we be able to expect that that project will advance to design? You know, essentially, I guess, catching up to the, you know, most recent announcements from from March 14th. And then also with Annie Gale, and just a slightly different question on that table. This project, obviously, says it's being, and also I also looked at the construction status report that was also on the agenda today for some additional information. The project is being managed by the CBE, and I'm just wondering what impact might have on timelines for Annie Gale? Because, as we know, there's a lot of projects, and we're really excited about them all, but it also means a lot of work. And so I trust that your staff are going to be flat out for a long time getting this done. But I'm just wondering about having those projects, I guess, catch up to the others that were just recently announced.
Through the chair. Most certainly, we do anticipate, given the school construction accelerator project or program announcing up to 30 new schools per year over three years, knowing that a delivery of a school takes from three to four years, from announcement to actual opening, that over the next seven years, we will be exceedingly busy delivering on new schools. And as a reflection of that, and speaking to your second question around the Annie Gale modernization, and the fact that, of course, we are both having to act as a as a point of contact with Alberta Infrastructure and Education to convey our needs and provide input on the new schools, but also to manage the delivery of modernizations and modular classrooms as well that are being installed. We have been adding staff to the facility projects team that deliver those projects. And so we've already had a number join the team. There are a number of additional that will be added in the coming months. Ultimately, I believe it's approximately seven positions that are being added to help with that, to create the additional capacity required that we believe will be needed over, again, at least the next seven years to fulfill on this mandate. Now, in terms of timelines for the Saddle Ridge Middle School, our understanding from Alberta Infrastructure is that they would be starting the planning work very shortly, and that will include some geotechnical studies that are essential to allow them to proceed with design. And so probably looking at a winter 25, 26 start for design. But of course, that is subject, it's outside of our control. It's subject to a whole sorts of variables, including these record numbers of of new schools that have just been announced and how Alberta Infrastructure will certainly be feeling the weight of that workload on their shoulders as well.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. So with the the schools that were recently announced for design funding, and I note that a number of them are in Northeast Calgary, and I know that residents over here have been very, very excited to be looking forward to some of these announcements, and will be excited to see these projects sort of proceed through to construction. But a bit curious, just generally speaking, we know that these projects are are managed by Alberta Infrastructure, and there's, you know, guidelines in terms of what the, you know, the build can look like and so on. But just kind of curious about how much input the CBE or the broader community even could have on the design of the school that's going to be in their community.
Through the chair. In terms of how much input the County Board of Education can have on the design, that that input actually can be quite significant. Alberta Infrastructure has some standard designs that they can, that they do offer us and that we can choose from. And additionally, we are also able to choose amongst recently completed school designs and ask that those be used with any adjustments based on our experiences within those schools to adjust, to to make the 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 school even better as a result. And so from that perspective, we do have the ability for some significant influence. From a community engagement perspective, Alberta Infrastructure, of course, needs to follow the City of Calgary Development Permit Guidelines that lays out where engagement is required typically. What we've experienced is that engagement is is only undertaken for larger high schools. What is done is that the Community Association is is contacted to notify them of the upcoming project. And then based on the response provided by the Community Association, a decision is made by Alberta Infrastructure in terms of of whether or not full public engagement is required. Of course, it's not. They don't have the final decision. Ultimately, it is the city, once they receive the the information, that will determine whether or not this will be a requirement for a project.
Go ahead, trustee Dennis.
Great, thank you so much, and this will be my last question. Thank you so much. So curious about what expenses are covered by the provincial design funding allocation and what additional investments, if any, might be required by the CBE for some of the design elements? So so transparency, I'm I'm making an assumption that all architectural design elements would be covered under that design funding provided by the province. It's sort of the more, I guess, creative interior artistic sort of pieces that we might want to incorporate in the school and in, you know, reflective of the community and that sort of thing. So I'm just kind of wondering about, yeah, those are those additional investments that are made on behalf of the on behalf of the CBE? And then?
We'll give trustee Dennis a minute to hopefully get back in. Though I appreciate people moving a bit, so I know it's not just me. Are you back, trustee Dennis?
I'm back, sorry. I guess my the internet was telling me to wait for my second part of the question, so I'll, I will do that. I will wait and ask the second part of my question after superintendent Breton answered the first one. Thank you.
Through the chair. And so certainly, your assumption is correct. The CBE does not have to cover any costs associated with the design phase of the of the project. And so any artistic elements, any elements that somehow connect with the community or maybe have an indigenous flavor to them, those are funded and incorporated within the design by Alberta Infrastructure. And Alberta Infrastructure, as part of their budget, of course, they're they're not just delivering a a box. And so there is recognition that there will be artistic elements and or whatever other aspects that will be added. And so those are typically funded also in terms of the delivery. So if there might be a mural, some sort of of tile work, whatever it might be, it's really when we're starting to request for things that are more exceptional and typically also much more expensive, then at that point in time, Alberta Infrastructure might be saying, okay, well, we can do this for you, but here's the cost that you have to be ready to to cover if you want this or that. And and one example, for example, is in high schools. Typically, we want cinder block walls for our hallways so as to ensure the longevity of those corridors and reduce the need for maintenance. And so those are things that we might cut a corner elsewhere and or intentionally cover off with some additional costs. Another aspect might be like a roofing system, where we intentionally go above and beyond. We look for a higher insulation value and a longer warranty on the roof, knowing just how important that system component is. And so again, there might be some horse trading that happens there and or some need for the CBE to cough up some dollars.
Okay, trustee Dennis, part B.
Great, and I think actually superintendent Breton, in many ways, sort of maybe satisfied my my curiosity in some of that anyways. Really relieved to hear that the province does provide, you know, an allocation around some of those more interior design creative elements, because we do not want our kids going to school in in boxes. So we, it's nice to know that that is supported, so grateful for that, actually. And yeah, just around the longevity and functionality in design, right? We want our schools to be pretty, but we also want them to have longevity and not have things in them that were going to require significant additional maintenance. And so, but I think you've answered some of those, unless you have any other comments. But I appreciate it, certainly, the cinder block comments for the walls and the roof and all that. But if you have anything else to add, I'm happy to have you do it. And if not, that is my last question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustees. And superintendent Breton, you've got your work cut out for you for the next many years, it would seem. Any other questions before we carry on? All right, is there forward a motion regarding this report? Thank you, trustee Dennis.
Great, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to the motion that the Board of Trustees approves the three-year school capital plan 2026 to 2029 as provided in the report and authorizes its submission to Alberta Education.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the three-year school capital plan 2026 to 2029 as indicated in the report and authorizes its submission to Alberta Education. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate?
Please to do so. Thank you so much, Chair Holder. I appreciate that this work is data-driven and transparent. It is important that the public and government can see how and why projects are on the plan and why they are in the order they are. This plan presents the projects that we need and demonstrates that we are fair, reasonable, and eager to meet the needs of families in our communities. Of note, we've asked for 16 new schools on this plan, and we are looking to build larger schools, highlighting our incredible need for increased learning space and our commitment to be efficient in the use of provincial investments and our own resources. Our schools serve Calgarians for generations, but they don't last forever and sometimes need additional investment. Crescent Heights High School is one of the oldest schools in our division, serving the community since 1928. With the modernization requested here, this school will serve students for generations to come. William Aberhart High School has reached the point where a replacement is necessary. And although so far in our history, this is a rare request, we do have the space to be able to build a replacement while still accommodating students in the existing building. Both are unique and necessary projects and important investments for students in Calgary. And I am looking forward to the work that administration will complete over this next year as it relates to our existing schools and how those will be embedded into the capital plan moving forward. I'd like to express my gratitude to the Government of Alberta, Alberta Infrastructure, and our Minister of Education for the 12 new school projects that have been announced over the last month for the Calgary Board of Education. The Board of Trustees has worked hard to bring attention to these projects, and we will continue to advocate on behalf of Calgarians. Even with those announcements, the need remains. Under the province's accelerator program, we are anxious to see the 2026 to 2029 new school requests approved so that we can meet the demand for learning spaces, have more students attend school closer to home and where they can walk to school, reducing our need for transportation services. And we look forward to investments into existing infrastructure, helping CBE to continue to be good stewards of the infrastructure resources we have. Having said that, we also know there is more to do in acquiring the and preparing sites for additional schools. Site availability and readiness has a significant impact on where and when the project will appear on the plan and also when and where we can build schools. And we still have communities waiting for schools. Administration has clearly outlined the incredible complexity in acquiring sites and the collaboration required to move readiness forward. The commitment to these ongoing conversations and a push to action is very clear. I hope that my remaining trustees will support this motion and with excitement move this forward to the province of Alberta. Thanks.
Thanks very much, trustee Dennis. Are there any trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. So our three-year plan is always an opportunity to reflect upon our values. Many times, these values can intersect, but overall, we want students attending a school close to home, sustainable access to programming, and a continued fiscal responsibility lens, about creating new learning spaces and managing our aging portfolio. The capital plan signals a movement of opportunity for the CBE to share our needs and empower citizens to advocate for both an increase in education infrastructure as well as a continued focus on having schools being built sooner in a rapidly expanding city. This advocacy lies with Calgarians and citizens sharing these needs municipally and provincially with their elected officials. This responsive capital plan before us today mirrors last year's in that these schools are in need. They are not a want or giant wish list. This plan is a result of refining our ranking criteria to identify the need of new developments sooner. It is clear that we will continue to need new schools and larger schools to reflect the density in newly built developments as well as areas throughout Calgary that have been revitalized with young families. I do think this plan deserves our full support. Our current infrastructure has not kept pace with student population and enrollment growth. We still have way too many schools in overflow and overflow receiving positions, too many schools that have lotteries, and too many communities that lack what should be a basic requirement, a neighbourhood school. Year one asks alone when almost 9,000 students can have a school in their community. Once a school is built, the opportunities are endless. It can mean that families will experience a decreased financial burden because they can walk to school and not pay for a 30-minute bus ride that passes by two or three schools that are too full to accommodate them. It has the possibility of reducing the stress of entering the lottery system, because in many cases, families that have moved into a house across the street from their school can't attend it. Neighbourhood development to elementary schools means the opportunity of active transportation to school, community green spaces, weekend playground trips, and soccer fields. It can mean local access to before and after-school care. These are powerful values that benefit us all.
Thank you, trustee May. Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you. What a difference three years ago. New criteria, new context and perspective, all within creating a plan for prioritizing new schools that is transparent, objective, and equitable. I reflect back on the 10-year, whatever it's called, school capital plan with great delight and appreciation as well, because we've changed the conversations. And it's hard not to go back and reflect on three years ago, because three years ago, I can remember being stunned that there was 440 requests for new schools within the province and we balanced that, obviously, with modernizations and new school constructions. And there was 14 new schools approved. So I'm grateful that there has been an increase in enrollment because it's cast to light on the need for new schools in Calgary. So my gratitude is obviously immense with the school construction accelerator program. I am a bit frustrated and concerned about the site readiness and just the urgency of partners coming together to value schools in our community. I think that's a conversation that is a value proposition that we all need to address. And the other piece that I just want to comment on is the south sector planning. You know, throughout the document, all indicators suggest that the largest population growth projected over the next five years is in the north and south sectors. And in the past, the south sector had lower utilization rates by residents, and we've seen new schools prioritized in the north and now finally in the southeast. And we need to get ahead of that in order to address just the south sector. So I'm grateful for Belmont on year one and concerned that we will need an additional three-year school construction accelerator program, that we're not going to be able to meet the CBE needs for new schools close to home and the ability actually to provide more special education classes and more alternative programs of choice without continued support from the government in addressing the learning spaces that we need.
Thank you, trustee Close. Trustee Hack, over to you.
Thank you. Fully support this plan, knowing that it does take a few years to get all the schools built, along with what was announced as design funding last Friday, with the understanding that will be granted construction funding once design is complete is truly what the CBE requires to support the massive increase of students we welcome and continue to welcome every single day. The capital plan reflects the board's direction to rank and make available criteria for new high schools. It has criteria and ranks K-9 schools for smaller communities that would otherwise have to bus out of area who absolutely deserve a local community public school. These rankings and transparency is what the public needs to support us in our advocacy to the provincial government. I appreciate and support this plan and want to especially draw attention to the format that has changed slightly, which shows a one-page or quick facts on each school that is being requested, shows the location and the reasons for this ranking. This makes it easier to digest, not only for our government as they read it and make decisions, but for the board when we advocate and for the public who are advocating alongside us. I fully, wholeheartedly support the submission of this report to the government and approve it today. I look forward to start advocating for everything on it right away and over the next year, as we need all these approved in the next budget from the provincial government.
Thank you, trustee Hack. I'll just weigh in that I am proud that the CBE does have a transparent, objective, and equitable approach to prioritizing new school requests. And we know that as a board, we continue to grow, and the city of Calgary continues to grow. And we know that our utilization rates for the foreseeable future will be very high, well beyond the fully utilized 85% threshold. And as noted on page six of nine of the report, the capital plan comes to us annually to allow for the opportunity to expand or contract the project list to reflect the changes in enrollment projections, site readiness, and other factors, which is very important. In knowing that our schools are aging and require significant investment to continue to be safe and suitable learning spaces, continued investment is necessary. Major school modernizations, replacements, and additions also have sound processes in place in our capital plan. And I'm pleased to see that additional analysis will be done over the course of the next year to develop a more fully informed plan on existing school projects. Page 22 of 86 outlines the very real and significant issues that we face when schools are fully utilized and the tremendous strain that is put on our aging facilities. The lack of physical space can also impact class size, educational programming, meeting the needs of complex learners, and expanding choice in our schools. And of course, students not being able to attend the neighbourhood schools and facing long bus rides. So I'm very pleased as well to support the approval of the 2026-29 three-year school capital plan and thank administration very much for the substantial work that was done and adjusted in a very short amount of time. Anyone else wishing to enter first round? We'll move on to second round. Anyone else or anyone wishing to enter second round? All right, trustee Dennis, do you wish to close?
I think trustee May raised her hand just as you said that to enter second round.
I'm sorry, this is on change screen. Sorry, go ahead, trustee May.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share that I can echo again the overall thanks for the school accelerator program. Those approvals did clear up our backlog list and now clearly and boldly reflects the continual needs of the CBE. This version of the capital plan demonstrates and prioritizes action in growth areas, and there are many new requests in the south and southeast quadrants. These schools are desperately needed, and if all of our year one requests are granted, it means that 2,325 students in the southeast quadrant and 3,755 students in the south quadrant will finally have a neighbourhood school. Where we can have Calgarians involved in their community, better decision-making happens and increases the value of shared responsibility. Neighbourhood schools help fill the gap. There are so many communities with no passive or third places. They have no libraries, recreation facilities, or meeting spaces. And while a new CBE school doesn't fix that lack of infrastructure, it does significantly add to the equation. These are values that make communities great and just a little bit more whole. I also wish to highlight and address the upcoming increase in education taxes. The increase means that many communities will expect to have a neighbourhood school or simply share the value that public education serves the common good. These increased collection of education taxes benefits all students in Alberta, but for some neighbourhoods, it may feel a little bit tighter in their pocketbook when they don't have a school granted to them or their approval is skipped over for another with no clear understanding as to why. It is reasonable for these communities to ask where lies their equitable access to public schools, programmes of study, programmes of interest, and the right to a community made whole. I'm also pleased to see the work undertaken to address high school capacity in the southeast quadrant, whose high school utilization by residents is 289% and projected to reach 338%, the highest in all of Calgary. The modulars that are planned for spring install will help John Cardinal with 150 student spaces, but the addition request would instead add up to 600 spaces. That's transformational. I still think addressing high school utilization is an ongoing project. This is a great first step and one that I hope can use in our other high schools. I know the south and southeast quadrants will be excited to finally see their community on this capital plan. Many families were upset that the CBE was not granted a school in Walden on the last round of announcements, but they can now see their needs reflected in this new list. Building these schools also helps neighbourhood communities and schools that are in overflow receivers. The overflow schools might just be able to lower their utilization, be able to reclaim their learning commons, wet labs, gyms, or stages from being used as classroom spaces. This is an empowering plan, not only for the CBE, but for constituents in the community. It allows and encourages conversations to occur about the importance of local schools as well as advocate to their city councillors regarding site readiness as well as their MLA about the importance of building and maintaining the choice of public schools and public education. In the end, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful and optimistic that the south and southeast quadrants will be awarded new schools and finally have students benefit from the value that is a neighbourhood community school.
Thank you, trustee May. Is there anyone else for second round of debate? All right, hearing none. Trustee Dennis, would you like to close?
Sure, just a few quick comments. Certainly, thank you all my colleagues for their comments and questions as we took a look at this report. Thank you so much for the diligence of our administration. I do want to acknowledge the incredible turnaround on this report following the announcement on Friday afternoon in order to have this new revised report ready for us to be able to look at, you know, starting on Friday and throughout the weekend. So certainly, thank you so much to staff for the incredible work that that was. We know it's not just, you know, move projects out and move other projects up. It was a much, much bigger job than that. And so thank you so much for that work and looking forward to the vote.
Thank you. That is what we will do now. I'll call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favour or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close.
In favour.
Trustee Dennis.
In favour.
Trustee Hack.
In favour.
Trustee May.
In favour.
Trustee Bukedinovich.
In favour.
Thank you. I also vote in favour of the motion that is carried unanimously. Are there any additional motions on this report? Trustee May.
That the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to provide the school addition ranking criteria points assigned to each Calgary Board of Education high school by no later than June 30, 2025.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? Trustee Close, go ahead.
I do have a question actually for administration, because we've had such detailed conversation today about the existing school criteria and even on 9/32 about the work that's ahead. I'm just wondering if June is a possibility or whether this work should be delayed for the next board? Just looking at capacity and resources.
Through the chair. The work will take approximately a month, and it is possible for us to meet the end-June timeline, taking into consideration the other workload that is occurring. What I do want to highlight, though, is that it will take then after that about five to six months to assess the sites as to whether or not they can actually take an addition. So we can have a scored listing to you by the end of June, but whether or not every one of those sites can actually accept an addition won't be known until about five or six months after that. And so again, I'm putting that forward to manage expectations, because maybe there is a high school there that might rank at a certain place, but ultimately, we might find, unfortunately, for different reasons, not possible to add an addition.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the motion itself? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to provide the school addition ranking criteria points assigned to each Calgary Board of Education high school by no later than June 30, 2025. Trustee May, would you please open debate?
Thank you. I brought forward this motion after reading our current capital plan that was created with our new criteria approved in October. As part of the major changes we approved, capital investment in existing schools could now be identified in new forms, including modernization, replacement, solution, or expansions through permanent school addition. In this report, only one school has been awarded points and put on the capital plan. The addition was for John Cardinal Schubert, and you found in table 11 on page nine of 32. And also for reference, on page nine of 79 of this report, you can see the flow chart for eligibility filters. And so as a result of knowing how full our high school sites are, knowing we have high school sites across the system that can benefit from an addition, I was surprised to not have this information provided. Although hearing the background as to why it's not there, I get it, but it's still important to me. And so I think it is important to have this ranking and assign points and be able to share the understanding of our needs, especially with high schools. And so the motion is being brought forward to obtain additional information on the status of our high schools, aid in our understanding of the system, and how it intersects. I think it's a critical piece of information.
Thank you. Are there trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee Close, go ahead.
I think given administration's answer about timing and capacity and managing our expectations and also the need that trustee May has identified, I can support this motion.
Anyone else for first round here? Trustee Hack, go ahead.
Thank you. I am in full support of this. Again, it's important that in any way we can be transparent about how schools make this list as it grows. It supports justification for the list itself as well as for our public. I think those are things that are important. No one wants to question why certain schools make the lists and others didn't and question if it was justified or not. So being open with the criteria gives legitimacy to administration who brings this list forward, to the board who accrues the three-year school capital plans, and to the public. The public's understanding and support means the difference of getting schools approved or not. And this is something that we saw throughout the last year. And look at what we did achieve. We received design and a construction funding announcements for 12 of our 13 schools on our year one capital plan. And I really hope by the end of the school year, we do see one last announcement from the Minister of Education or Infrastructure approving design and/or construction funding for Walden School. Walden School is as much needed as the rest of our list. So this criteria is what makes it possible and the transparency of this and the community support. So I will always support transparency whenever possible because it builds trust. And we, the public, have faith in us and trust in us and our list to help advocate for it. So I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Anyone else for first round? Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I would agree that I think it is important information to see the points ranking for existing schools. I'm a little bit on the fence in terms of the usefulness of sort of that, only that bit of information right now. When we've, and I understand it's a quick turnaround from admin, so I really appreciated sort of the clarity in terms of the operational impact and capacity impact to produce it. It's just if the expansion or addition or what have you isn't possible, then that's really the most important information, I think, is the possibility of it. So I'm a bit on the fence in terms of- So I'm a bit on the fence in terms of getting a report that only has, I guess, the ranking information and what we would sort of use that for right now because the more critical pieces are sort of coming later. So a little bit on the fence. I understand it's, I agree that it's important information, just not sure if having incomplete information is as helpful as having all the rest.
Thank you. Anyone else for first round here? I might just weigh in that overall, I'm also a little on the fence, but I'm very satisfied with the complexity and the criterion that we do use to assess the needs within our system beyond new school construction. And it does take into consideration the needs and the totality of the system. And we know that a further analysis is being done. So I feel comfortable not putting a timeline on administration to bring this back because we know it would come back before the next capital plan, which will influence that work. So I don't see the urgency in this because I'm very comfortable with what we do have, the criteria that we're working through. Anyone else wishing to enter first round? Okay, we'll move to second round of debate. Anyone for second round? All right, trustee May, would you like to close?
Thank you. I don't really have much to add, but I'm hoping that my fellow trustees can support me in this motion to have an increased understanding of our system and a continued focus on high school utilization and space concerns. While it was mentioned that it may just be a partial list, I think a partial list is better than no list. And so it was mentioned that we'll have a full list of Table 11 next year, but I still think whatever we can get now is valuable for us. And so I'm hoping that people can support me in this motion.
Thank you. I'll now call on each of you individually to indicate whether you're in favor or opposed to the motion. Trustee Close.
In favor.
Trustee Dennis.
Opposed.
Trustee Hack.
In favor.
Trustee May.
In favor.
Trustee Bukedinovich.
Opposed.
And I am also opposed, so that motion fails. That now brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. There are no items pulled from consent, and as such, all items will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. The board has one legal, three land, three labor, and five strategic planning matters to deal with in camera following the public portion of the meeting. This brings us to the conclusion of the portion of the agenda. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for the meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025.